Okay, Tribal Council, if you could take your seats, we'll get started. All right, moving on to our next agenda item. I see EBD, no agenda, education, no agenda items. So we're going to jump down into the Finance Committee. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Finance Chair.
Thank you, President. If you give me one second. Thank you. So, item number one, ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe amending the Tarot ordinance and requirements to distribute the 25% employment rights fee revenue collected by the Tarot to be allocated equally between general governmental purposes of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the nine districts and Tarot operations and administration. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of the Fort Laramie of 1851, stat 749, September 17, 1851, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15, stat 635, April 29, 1868, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C. subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of the persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted a travel employment rights ordinance Tarot in September 2009 to create employment and training opportunities for tribal members and address employment discrimination against Indian people. And whereas the Tarot requires payment of an employment rights fee that is a source of revenue for the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas on June 15, 2023, the OST Finance Committee has reviewed the distribution of the proceeds of the employment rights fee and supports changing the distribution to be divided between one administration and operation of the Travel Employment Rights Office, two general governmental purposes, and the nine districts governments. And whereas on June 23, 2023, the OST EBND Committee has reviewed the distribution of the proceeds of the employment rights fees and supports the changing the distribution to be divided between one administration and operation of the Travel Employment Rights Office, two general governmental purposes, and three, the nine district governments. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby amend the Travel Employment Rights Tarot ordinance and requirements adopted on September 23, 2009 by amending the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth paragraphs of Chapter Nine Employment Rights Fees, which shall read as follows, with deletions in strike-through and additions underlined and in bold. Thirty-three point four percent of the amount paid by the covered employer as the as the amount owed for the employment rights fee shall be paid in the Finance Office of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and shall be deposited by such office in a special account. The funds from the account shall be used for the administration and operation of the Tribal Employment Rights Office. Thirty-three point three percent of the amount paid by the covered employer as the amount owed for the employment rights fee shall be paid in the Finance Office of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and shall be deposited by such office in a special account. The funds from which account shall be used for general governmental purposes. Thirty-three point three percent of the amount paid by the covered employee employer as the amount owed for the employment rights fee shall be paid in the Finance Office of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and shall be deposited by such office in a special account. The funds from which account shall be used to assist tribal government in fulfilling its annual contributions to the nine district governments as budgeted each year. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon the date of enactment and shall supersede, repeal, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Certification motion.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, your second. Second by, was that Councilman Greenwall?
Blaine.
Okay. Councilman Little Thunders. Okay, we got a question? Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
It's just on the dates. Julianne, is that June 23, 23? Yeah, that, and then the, I think the certification is, says 23.
Right, so I'm not sure who created this. This ordinance, but they need to correct the dates on there to reflect 2025.
Okay, got a question? Councilwoman Kelly.
Yeah, I remember this meeting, but didn't we up that 33% to make it a little higher for the districts? Because now we're gonna go, there's gonna be nine districts competing for one-third. And I thought we increased, made it higher, didn't we, that percentage? I, I. Yeah, that's kind of what I remember.
No, the increase went from 25% to 33%. The question was the point four percent at the very top. That's the only change, was the 33.4% was the only change. So the increase was from 25% across. Right.
Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, I think. I don't know what they passed in EMBD, but I think, you know, one of the things we do have to look at, look at too, is we have some of the districts that waived their Tarot fees. So I don't know, there's no, there's no kind of mechanism in this ordinance to identify and yeah, because they shouldn't be allowed to get the Tarot fees they waived. You know, because a lot of our districts are losing out when you waive those fees. So our district's not going to get those, so that's something you got to remember. So I think we have to look at how we're going to distribute.
Go ahead.
So I don't know if you all remember, Mr. Whalen came and spoke with us regarding why we should not waive Tarot fees. So we, he said, there's nothing in the policy that, that tells us that we should not do that or discusses why we should not be doing that. So he's supposed to be bringing back, or not him. However, the Tarot is supposed to bring back a writing on what, how waiving Tarot fees affects us and why we should not be waiving Tarot fees. And if you look in your minutes on August 28, it doesn't go into much detail, but it's in your minutes for the Tarot being raised from 25% to 33%.
Councilwoman Little Hawk, question.
You know, I think that with all this discussion, I think we should, it's going to make a motion to table, send it back to Finance, and I think we should look at this again. Because not only with what Jackie's bringing up, Councilwoman Sears, is that when you waive your Tarot fees in these, especially with the districts, what we were hearing is that Council is directing the Tarot Director to get out there, check on those contractors. Go do this, go look at that. And you know what? What his question and concern is that you guys waived your Tarot fees on these projects. But so why are we allowed to go over there and do all of that? So I think that, with that being said, I think we should really look at this because of the questions that are coming up now. So I'm going to make a motion to table it and send it back to Finance and that we could maybe bring the Tarot Director there and he could, we could look at this because those are coming from them too.
Okay, we, we still have a motion, go ahead.
Chair, I.
Oh, yes, yes, that.
I still have a motion.
And we have a second here, is that your second? And your motion to table overrides. Tabling motion takes President. Secretary, call for the Roco.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
No.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Julianne Spotted Bear?
No.
Ryan JumpinEagle Senior?
Uh, yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Don Rickosberg?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah, no.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Twelve yes, five no, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you. I know. Literally. All right, next item. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the contract. If you, if you're following along, if you can just correct those words as we go, for Whitley LLC to provide audit services for the 2020, correct that year as well, fiscal year. I believe, oh wait, that's correct. To provide audit services for the 2023 fiscal year. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, stat 749, September 17, 1851, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15, stat 635, April 29, 1868, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C. subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas Whitley LLC is available to provide critically needed services to complete the OST audit for fiscal year 2023. And whereas the Finance Committee reviewed the contract on September 4, 2025, attached and recommended approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves the contract for Whitley LLC to provide auditing services for the 2023 fiscal year to be paid out of general fund. And be it further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate the request. Certification motion. We did discuss this in Finance for Whitley to move forward, for those of you who attended.
I have a question, Councilwoman. When, when they're, when they're doing these audits, is this a full audit or is it just, because is it just certain things that are in this audit that's being audited?
If you read the attached letter, they start with a pre-audit and then they'll explain the explanation of audit that they're running on the attached letter. So if you want, it's long, so if you can read through and everything that they're auditing. I can read it if you would like.
No, I just, I'm just asking. Unless you want to. And I'm just asking, just want to make sure that we're checking everything.
Right, it talks about the scope of the audit inside of the letter.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan JumpinEagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Don Rickosberg? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Dillon will vote yes.
Unanimous, 18, motion carried.
Thank you. This third one is the audit that we were all talking about regarding the one-time funding. We also discussed this last week in the Finance meeting, so this resolution will fulfill that approval that we made last week as well. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe amending Resolution Number 25-137 and other actions approving the use of BIA one-time reoccurring reoccurring year-end funds to obtain an additional auditing firm to use such available funds to obtain services for audit 2024. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, stat 749, September 17, 1851, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15, stat 635, April 29, 1868, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C. subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe can request year-end funds for a one-time non-reoccurring funding need through the BIA from remaining fiscal year 2025 funds. And whereas the OST has several overdue audits and has discussed the potential for an additional auditing firm to aid in submitting those audits sooner. And whereas the OST Tribal Council had previously approved requesting reoccurring funding from remaining fiscal year 2025 money for use and obtaining additional audit help. Whereas the OST Finance Committee has reviewed the current circumstances and recommends that any available reoccurring funding be used to obtain services for auditing fiscal year 2024 to most quickly address the delayed audits. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby amends Resolution Number 25-137 and supporting action motion Number 25-269. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves the use of BIA one-time non-recurring funds for payment of Whitley to complete an audit of the 2024 fiscal year. And be it further resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe shall provide the BIA with a budget and budget narrative and scope of work. And be it further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate the request. Certification motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilman Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan JumpinEagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Don Rickosberg? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Julia, this last resolution that you read, are you using Whipley for both the twenty-three and twenty-four?
Twenty-four has to be our.
Advertised?
Right.
Okay, so we need to correct the the one of the be it further resolved and remove remove it from the resolution because it says Whipley for payment to Whipley.
It should stay RFQed.
Okay, I'll make that change. Okay. Yeah, we got it. We'll change it for the RFP.
Thank you. So that'd be my motion with that amendment.
Okay. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. And Councilman Weston. Call for the vote. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We already voted on it, so but. Okay, so. So with that, that first motion is eighteen unanimous?
Yep.
Eighteen unanimous, that one carried, and this is with the amendment?
It's not final though. They can't make a motion to it because it's not.
It wasn't final, we didn't announce it.
But it's not numbered or finalized yet. This motion to amend for to correct the.
That's what we. The motion to correct the last resolution was. Okay. Councilman Standing Soldier and second was. Councilman Little Thunder. Little Thunder. Call for the vote.
David Kelly. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Ray Gospair. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, President, that's all Finance Committee has.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to next agenda item is HHS. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe adding Mr. James Cross to the membership of the Health and Human Services Committee. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas the tribal council conducts business using a variety of standing committees for which members are normally selected at the beginning of the term of government. And whereas since the committee rosters were made, Mr. James Cross from Pass Creek District has decided to serve on the HHS Committee. And whereas on the second day of September, the HHS Committee met in a regular meeting with the quorum president and voted to consider the matter and desires to take the recommended action. Now therefore be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe adds hereby adds Mr. James Cross to the membership of the HHS Committee. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
David Kelly. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
No, just kidding, no voting.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Ray Gospair.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Committee. Counsel.
Okay, moving on, next agenda item is Land Committee. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Chair.
Secretary, could you read the resolution?
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe nominating Tribal Council Representative Troy Little to serve on the U.S. Department of Agriculture Tribal Advisory Committee. And whereas we have the sovereignty clause, and whereas the Section sixteen clause, and whereas the Article four clause. And whereas David Poyer, Tribal Council Representative from the Porcupine District on the Pineridge Indian Reservation is currently serving in the U.S. Department of Agriculture Tribal Advisory Committee, which is established pursuant to Section one two three zero three of the Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018, publication AL one one five dash three three four to advise the Secretary of Agriculture on matters relating to tribal and Indian affairs. And whereas there are four vacancies on the U.S. Department of Agriculture Tribal Advisory Committee, and the department is accepting applications through October sixth, 2025 from individuals who are authorized to represent Indian tribes. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council adopts this resolution to authorize the president of the Oglala Sioux Tribe or in his absence, the vice president of the tribe to nominate Troy Little Tribal Council Representative from the Oglala District for one of the vacancies on the U.S. Department Agricultural Tribal Advisory Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby authorizes the president of the Oglala Sioux Tribe or in his absence, the vice president of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to nominate Troy Little Tribal Council Representative from Oglala District for one of the vacancies on the U.S. Department of Agriculture Tribal Advisory Committee. And be it further resolved that David Poyer, Tribal Council Representative from the Porcupine District, will continue to serve on the U.S. Department Agriculture Tribal Advisory Committee. Certification.
Chair, before I make the motion to approve, this has to get in right away because the closing, they have to have this by October the sixth. So Stacy, I think this has to get in, I think, to Jennifer Hughes or either Steve Gunn, I mean, do they consider me? Troy, did you do your biography and everything? That's all done? Okay, motion approved.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I think you need to do a biography and all that stuff to get nominated. So that's good, we're moving. Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Ray Gospair.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Fifteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
It's all the way up, Chair, thanks.
Hey, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I think Councilman Little should give us a speech on his nomination.
I totally agree. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I see in the Economic Business Development Committee that you were also in for a nomination for the USDA Tech Committee. Is there more than, is there more positions available to be sat on there? If so, you know, I'd like to. Can we nominate, our President Frank Starr comes out? I guess I'll do a motion to nominate you as well because the more votes we have on those committees, the better.
I think there's only one position. Yeah.
Chair.
But you got to remember that you may nominate him, but he still has to get nominated on the board. So it goes into a bigger pot nationwide. And then from there, they vote to see whose qualify our board picks that. Go ahead.
The way it works is there's no guarantee that Troy's getting on. The Secretary of Agriculture does the selection for those positions. So you mean, yeah. And you don't know when that's going to happen because the closing date was, I think, last, today, today was the closing date. But now they changed it till October the sixth, which is Monday. So the Secretary, as it says in the resolution, the Secretary of Agriculture is going to make that selection of four people that's nationwide.
Okay, I thought you meant from our tribe, so thanks for clarifying that. Okay.
Yeah, it's a national position. Most likely, they look at tribal leaders first in that selection. And then if a tribe wants to select a councilman, I guess that's fine too. Well, we'll get that, try to get that in soon as possible, I guess. Give me a couple of minutes. I know the, our next presenters are not here or there's nothing reported, right?
Chairman. Chair, I know you passed out a report regarding the email. I'll make a motion to approve your report.
Okay, let me, give me just a couple of minutes. I need to go check on something. So just hang tight.
Is it okay if Yom runs the meeting while you're gone?
Buzz has a seat in the circle, but Yom.
Okay, so. Right now, if you look on the agenda, we're jumping down into the present because there's no agendas. Items were submitted for Law and Order and OST Youth Affairs. So there's a couple of things that came up and I wanted to share with with the council here and for the people listening. We are sending out a letter, I just want to show you here. I don't have copies, we're just, we're just not getting it out there. But and it pertains to federal trust and treaty obligations in event of a government shutdown. So I got the letter here, it's been sent. And this is what's going out there to the President of the United States. Yeah, we can get a copy out. You got to listen. Also. Also, we're handing out some paperwork here. also we're handing out some paperwork here. We want to push for Mr. Reno Red Cloud. Did you want to talk about this one-time funding?
On that, the resolution for the one-time recurring, non-recurring funding, at the end of the year, they have leftover dollars that the tribes can request. So that's what that is, and it's for all of the 638 programs. There's 22 of them, and it's attached to the back of the, the resolution, of the proposed resolution. You didn't get that one? Word vowel go. Yeah, it'd be that one. So, and I guess that's going to be dependent on the government shutdown and which programs money is not going to come down to, but, but that's what that is. It's just a one-time, non-recurring funding if they have anything available.
So we just approved the, we approved the funding from the return, the one-time recurring funding for our audit. Will, is that going to be separate from what was already approved from that funding? So this is in addition to it?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to read the? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we wanted to bring up when the BIA Superintendent was here, but I thought we was going to wait until her report came up. That was one of the questions I was wanting to bring up too, so. But that, either way.
Yeah, I mean, she'll be here.
It's good to have.
Yeah. And then that way you can ask her those questions because she's aware of the funding that they possibly could have, so.
And from what I hear, there's a lot of funding that's just sitting there that I think tribes can go after.
Read it? Want me to read it? Let me.
We're going to read it for the record.
Okay. A resolution of the Executive Committee of the, see, this was supposed to go to the Executive Committee, and Olivia sent it to me yesterday, so I got it ready for a council right away. So that could be changed. Of the Ogallawasoo Tribe approving the request to the BIA for one-time, non-recurring year-end funding for various program needs. And then I'll skip down to the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas. Whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe can request year-end funds for one-time, non-recurring funds, funding needed, needs through the BIA for, from remaining fiscal year 2025 funds. And whereas the OST has several programs that receive BIA funds and could benefit from additional funding from a variety of purposes. And whereas the executive, whereas the OST Tribal Council has reviewed the various programs that wish to request non-recurring funding from remaining fiscal year 2025 money for program use. And then it says, see the attached list, and that's when you have the list of the 22 programs. Therefore be it resolved that the Ogallawasoo Executive Committee, or the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council hereby approves requesting one-time, non-recurring funds from the BIA for the following programs. And it, it just lists all the programs that's already attached to the back. Be it further resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribe will provide the BIA with a budget and a budget narrative and a scope of work for the various program needs. And be it finally resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president is hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate the request.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Chair, our President. My motion is to, with the amendments to State Tribal Council, where it says Executive Board, to make those amendments.
Okay. Call for the vote.
And just for the record, number four needs to be removed too because it gives the XB authority on there. So I'll just remove that, number four. David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Donreg Ospear? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sixteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
So according to staff, Reno wanted to push this through here, but he's requesting consultation with the council. But he wants.
I see. And he wants the tribe to request it?
Okay, Council, the next one was a meeting from, or it was, it's addressed from Ms. Diana Diaz Toro. Reno sent me this yesterday, and, and just discussing it with Rayanne here. It would be best to refer it back to the committee, and then from there move forward with the process. So, because it's requesting consultation, so. Yeah, Reno, Reno Red Cloud.
Yeah, I think Land Committee.
Land. Okay.
Go ahead.
Question, when is the, the, when is he, I know it sounds like he wants to, they want to do a consultation in October? So. Just wonder what, what your thoughts on it, Chair? Land Committee?
Go ahead, Councilman Poyer. You know, that's why we've been telling them to work with Stacy to set up these, set up these consultations because Parks was trying to set one up too, and we told Taylor to work with you before on a consultation. And I, I thought we already told Reno to work with Stacy to set, set this up. Yes.
He came, he came to me, and he said that he was going to be making, a meeting with Jeff Parsons regarding that issue, and that he wanted to set up a government to government. So I told him that to make sure that he follows Ordinance 1110, because in there it states that any consultation that is requested by the council needs to be brought by resolution. And then the process starts, like, is sent to the agency, the federal agency, by the tribal president to request the consultation after the resolution is completed or approved.
Okay, then Monday we'll have to take care, have to have him get that resolution in place to get.
And I did tell that to Parks.
All right, thank you.
Just go to XB after Monday? Yeah.
Okay, so one, so an option here would be to, I could probably draft something up by the end of the council meeting. If you want to push it back to the, towards the end of the agenda, I can draft something up so you can pass it today if you want. The other option would be just to delegate the authority to the XB to address it and make that request, but it, in the ordinance, it has to come from Tribal Council, so.
Go ahead.
If time is permitting, then I'll make that motion that you go ahead and draft up something that we can approve today before the end of council. And I would also like to know why that Inspector General position and wasn't put on today's agenda. Are we without crime? Embezzlement, malfeasance of funds, you name it.
That was sent to you and Lyle and Cora back in August. So. No, we sent it, the final, to you. So I don't know why it's not on the agenda. Yep. It's sent, it was sent to, for, for, to the committee, like usual.
There's a charger here somewhere.
The, the third and final one, the resolution that I have is.
Oh, hang on, hang on, we got a motion. Give us just one second. We're looking for a resolution. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
While we're waiting, I just have a quick question as for the attorneys. It was some, it was something that was brought up that I took note of during the meeting with the, during the impact meeting with NCAI, and I wanted to bring it up to our attorney. They didn't go much into detail, but I took note of it, and I wanted to hear from our attorneys. Are we, are, is your office scheduled to attend, attend the listening session on the NAI, NAI Court Judges Listening Session? I know there, there's going to be discussion regarding the Public Law 280 to talk about how it can be grown or changed and pulling assessments and what it means for all areas and data. Is there, is there a plan to sit in on the listening session? Because I would encourage that we do sit in on that and bring an update back.
I'm not aware of it. Lisa maybe, so that's probably a Lisa question. Is she on?
But I would, I just wondered why our judge, our attorneys are, would not sit in on that.
I wasn't aware of it, so we can. I mean, there's nothing, if you want us to, we can, so.
I think that would, I think that would be beneficial for us to stay abreast of what's going on, especially when it's regarding areas like that.
Do you have the notice that you can share with us, email?
I'm looking on their website now, and I can just send it, send that to you in that way.
Thank you.
So, um, in finding the resolution, it was passed last month and so, um, it was a resolution, let me read it, resolution of the Ogallisou Tribe, Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe authorizing government to government consultation with U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission concerning the Dewey in SITU Uranium Recovery Project. And so it was, um, approved, so at this point, he just needs to send it forward.
So we'll put that together and send it. Okay.
President.
Yes.
I think you just need to look at the location too, Stacy, because it has Billy Mills Hall on there. Make sure that we're not, there's no water over there.
So maybe on the location, we could just like, to be determined or something, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I think I made a motion and I don't know what happened after that.
I don't think we need that now, we just found the, uh, resolution, but thank you. So we're good with that one, the Dewey Burdock mining, we'll get that taken care of, the location and all that, it has, it gives a two, two dates on it, so we'll, uh, get that, the kinks worked out there and send it off. Okay.
Okay, the, the third and final ordinance, all right, this is an ordinance, I'm sorry. Ordinance of the Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe amending the Financial Management Manual of the Ogallisou Tribe. Skip down one, two, three, I'll start at the fourth, whereas, whereas the Tribal Council adopted a financial management manual by ordinance number 09-13 on March 13, 2009. And whereas the Tribal Council amended the Financial Management Manual in ordinance numbers 12-05, 14-10, 14-15, and 17-27. And whereas ordinance 17-21, ordinance amending the Financial Management Manual of the Ogallisou Tribe, section 02.04, President delegates to the President the authority of a chief operating officer and whereas to perform the services required of a chief operating officer, such as preparation of the annual budget and overseeing the operations of the tribe's financial department, the President requires immediate and unfettered access to the tribe's financial records. And whereas the Finance Committee considered proposed revision to the Financial Management Manual by the President on March 27, 2025 and recommends their adoption. Now therefore be it ordained that the Ogallisou Tribe Council of the Ogallisou Tribe hereby amends Chapter 2, Staff Responsibilities, Section 02.204, President of the Financial Management Manual of the Ogallisou Tribe, to read in its entirety as follows. The President is the Chief Operating Officer of the tribe and provides overall direction to the staff to assure that tribal council policies are followed and expectations are met. General duties of the President in the area of financial management include the following. One, serves as the primary negotiator with federal funding agencies on grant and contract matters. Two, recommends to the tribal council situations that require litigation. Three, negotiates major contracts to be performed by outside firms. Four, serves as the Executive Board representative on determining the annual allocations for programs under the BIA tribal priority allocation system. Participates in all meetings and negotiations regarding the tribal priority allocation system. Five, reviews and approves the annual indirect cost proposal prior to its submission to the Department of the Interior Office of Inspector General. Six, complete and timely access to all financial records in the custody of the OST Treasurer. This shall include remote access, read only, to all OST accounts at all financial institutions. Authority to communicate with access to all internal and external auditors regarding previous and current pending audits. Eight, access to all operational cost information, including revenues, expenditures, and indebtedness. Nine, salary and benefits received by elected and appointed officials of the tribe. Ten, authorized to release any of the above described financial to each tribal council person in their desired format so they can better serve their fiduciary obligations to this nation. Eleven, assist the treasurer in other financial matters as required by the treasurer. Be it therefore ordained that the foregoing amendments shall take effect immediately and be it finally ordained that the Financial Management Manual of the Ogallisou Tribe is adopted by ordinance number 09-13 and as amended by ordinance numbers 12-05, 14-10, 14-15, and 17-27. And as further amended by this ordinance is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference certification.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So Chairman, did you take this to finance? Because wasn't this the one you brought a couple of months ago and it, and it got shot down? I mean, the process would have been to go to Finance Committee with this. And you have everything you're asking in this, you have that authority already. You get the same documents as we do. You know, you're allowed to, to go and, and get all these documents from the treasurer right now, aren't you?
Well, I think this is also authorizes the tribal council too.
It just, this is just for you. And, um, you know, you, it, I don't know, like, we, we discussed this last time when you brought this forth, but, you know, I think I'll make a motion to table and send back to Finance Committee that you guys bring it there.
Okay, uh, motion to table by Councilman Jumping Eagles, second by Councilman Poyer. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior? Lyle Weston?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Dillian Spotted Bear?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Don Regosberg?
No.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Yeah.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Troy Little?
No.
Seven yes, nine no, one not voting. Motion, motion failed.
President, I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, motion to approve the ordinance, uh, second by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Okay, go ahead.
Second by Dave Kelly.
Second by Dave Kelly, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I was just going to say, I don't see the problem with this, you know, we all seen in the news what's going on with our sister tribe up north and, um, I would, I think we all need to hold each other, um, fiscally responsible when it comes to the tribe's finances and we should be holding, um, in that sense, we should, we should understand what that means. So who has access to the funds? You know, we saw, we, we all wave our hand to, an oath to the tribe and so what the President is asking is no different than what we should all have access to, uh, in regards to our funds because we're under, we're in a position right now that we're trying to pull ourselves out of and now is a time where we should be all trying to work together to bring ourselves out of the situation we're in. And that's why I voted no to table it and I, and I believe we should support this because in whatever we, in whichever way we do this, we should work together to, to help each other because if we do things in a good way, it, things will happen for us and we have to keep in mind, we're not doing it for ourselves, we're doing it for the people and that's how we should operate. Thank you.
Councilwoman, Littlehawk Western.
I just want to thank our Finance Chair for that. You know, I brought this paper today and I hope a lot of you bought it and read about that, our sister tribe up north, about what was going on at their, in their tribe right now. And I think we heard a little bit about it at our meeting in Casper, President, when we talked to the Vice President of that tribe. And I think there's things that go on sometimes that, uh, they felt that was protected too long. But when the President got in, he had access to all their financials. So he did ask for a forensic audit and the council did approve it. But when the time came, they, when the forensic audit started, it looked at everything. When they seen that, they tried to stop it and they got, tried to get rid of him. But thankfully, according to their constitution, they have chiefs. Mind you, they have chiefs in their communities. They took a stand and they took out that counsel that did that to them, to the President. There was eight of them, left two of them, but he's moving forward and the chief's appointed that interim consul to sit in and their pictures are right here, I read the whole story. I know we read the, uh, heard the Vice President of that tribe, Northern Cheyenne. I don't want us to be there one day. You know, a lot of us are hearing too much things, we're all constantly on Facebook, but our people want answers. They want us to be accountable and transparent and some of us sit on Finance Committee, so that's all we want to do and I know you want that too, President. Nothing wrong with it. I think we just need to move forward and allow for this to happen. It's been, it's in the Financial Management Manual and you tried, you tried last administration, never went through, never got approved and now you brought it back again, didn't get approved. So today we need to stand strong on these issues because, you know, it's happening to other tribes because nobody's not really able to look at everything. So today, you know, I made that motion to not to table, I meant to, uh, not table it because we need to, we need to move forward on these things and that's my motion today is to approve it. And my, I'm going to say one more thing and to make sure that this is implemented into the Financial Management Manual. Now the tre, the secretary records our minutes, but I want to make sure our attorney or whoever it may be puts this in the Financial Management Manual. The, what we heard from Mr. Gunn two weeks ago is that we worked on the Financial Management Manual, but at the time it was just myself, Dean Patton, and Mr. Bickrow. We worked on it, but we stopped because of COVID. So Finance Chair, she's going to set up a meeting, so we're going to look at the Financial Management Manual, I'm going to look at all of that. Mr., uh, Mr. Norman there, once this resolution passed, Inspector General. So let's start looking at things like that to be accountable to our people. You know, so again, I want this implemented into that Financial Management Manual. I don't know who's going to do it, Stacy, is it going to be you, Rayanne, attorney? Or who's going to be, we need to know because we had the issue with, uh, 20, the 18-24 when it came to that, uh, what's it called, comptroller? Nobody took the time to make the changes into the personnel manual. So who's going to, I just want to implement it in there. So when we get the manual and we work on it, this is going to be in there. That's my question.
We'll go ahead and, and take that on, uh, for now and just FYI, um, the legal department will be going through some training with the digitization project and also we'll be including the secretaries in that so that we'll work together to make sure that the code's always updated.
Yep, make sure all our actions are changing where it needs to change because you, attorneys put in the resolution ordinance and all ordinance, all other ordinances and resolutions are hereby nullified, but we don't know if it ever gets changed until we ran into the comptroller issue. So again, I just wanted to share that today, thank you.
Yes, and I'd like to comment on that too, um, again, you know, this is about transparency. Uh, this is why I brought it up again and it did, I figured it didn't have to go through committee again and run it again, nothing's changed on it. And this is my way of, of trying to get us all access to our financials because you, look what's, look, look what's going on. You know, it's important that we all have, have, uh, access to our accounts, there's, there's things on there that we don't even know. How many of you guys know of the debts we have? How many do you guys know if there's funds being transferred? How many do you guys know of the general fund? All those kind of things, I think we're privileged, we should be privileged to, to look at. And this is one way of doing that. We need to start working together. And I've been trying to, trying to figure that out, uh, now how, how we all can work together and, and that's, that's one way of, of figuring that out because I, I really, really do believe, uh, the, the financial reports we get, that's not all the information that's, that our tribe has. All, we, there's more accounts on there, there's things we don't even know. You know, how much debt we have, how, what, what, how many accounts do we have, who do we owe? Look at the FSA. That's all I'm trying to do is, is bring transparency, transparency to the tribe and to the people. to the people. That's why I do that Facebook page and put everything out there, everywhere I go, the things I do, the things that pertain to this tribe. That's what the people want, that's what I'm giving them. And I get blasted too for saying, I'm, I'm traveling here and there, but a lot of those are important meetings that we need to be at. We're trying to collect data, information, and bring that back, and we take a position on, on, on issues nationwide, in DC. Those, those are the things that I'm trying to push before I get out of office. And I hope we get that, make it to that point, because look at our situation now, we're, we're three audits behind, we're going to be four audits behind. We're not even running at full, full capacity here with our tribal employees. We should all be pushing to expose our financials, but we're not. As, as you just seen, there's division right here, we just voted it down. But that's what I just want to put out there. We all need to be on the same sheet of music, our financials has to, have to come out. We got to support that. Your people are asking for that, your own people in each district are asking for that. But yet, we're voting on it, we're voting it down. We need to start voting for our people. That's what they want. That's all I have, thank you. Okay. Secretary call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
To that speech, yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Regosberg.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried. Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, just a brief follow-up to that motion. That is why this Inspector General is so crucial to be put in place. Exactly what the president said, transparency followed up by investigation.
Councilwoman Halverson.
I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm really glad that motion went through. I just hope the First National Bank realizes that motion gives you the authority to go to the First National Bank and release documentation. When they asked why that motion was made for this ordinance change, and they claimed that there was already access to the accounts, that's not true. The First National Bank wasn't allowing access to the president of the tribe, access to our financials. So I'm glad this went through, thank you.
Okay, so we also had a motion on the floor to approve by Councilman Jumping Eagle, and second by Councilman Randle, Secretary call for the vote.
This was to approve the report, President's report. David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yep.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Regosberg.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson.
To approve the 12-page report, yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried. Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
I, I have a question on what you just did. Ryan's motion was on the floor, and yet you recognized other motions. When that first one was on, that, that motion should have been ran first.
Yes, I know that, I was just, it was brought to my attention. That motion was to hold off, because we didn't, we didn't know, we were looking at, we had other issues.
But there wasn't a second, because he said, I have some other stuff coming on.
Yeah, because, well, remember, 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 I said, hold up, I gotta, I want to check on something. Okay, so we're going to move on. Vice President's report.
Chair, she did get us a hard copy, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Poyer. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Richard Greenwald Senior. Lyle Weston.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Julian Spotted Bear.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Don Regosberg.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson. Troy Little.
No.
Six yes, eight no, three not voting, motion failed.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I think she just needs to be a little more detailed on her reports, because it's not, doesn't really tell us anything. That's just my opinion.
Okay, yeah, seems like, you know, I give you a 16-page report, yeah. We're going to move on to the Fifth, Fifth Member's Office. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Fifth Member.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to say thank you for the meeting today. I want to acknowledge Jim Cross, thank you for acknowledging our Orange Shirt Day, our children. I originally worked on the project back in 2016, 2018. I worked, I did the initial research for our Carlisle children, and we had six children in the cemetery there in Pennsylvania. And so I, you know, it kind of came, it became a very close project to me, you know, a personal project, because, you know, I have an ancestor, Lone Hill, that was in the first group of children sent to Carlisle from Pine Ridge. And so I want to acknowledge, you know, Papa Wajila, he was there, but he survived. And so I still feel like, you know, I'm very connected to these boarding school children, so I just want to acknowledge that, too, you know, remembering our children at Carlisle, remembering our children at White's Industrial School in Indiana, Genoa. We have more, like in Dickinson, there's a lot of our children that are still out there. So we just want to, I want to, you know, just remind everybody to not forget those children that are still on foreign soils, you know, they're not here with us today. So I just want to acknowledge that, and thank you again, Jim, for mentioning them today and this morning. But my hard copy report is given out. I'm mainly in-house. I didn't put on here one thing I did last week, we had a land acknowledgement. And so we actually did a video, went to American Horse Creek area, they wanted to video the reservation in my favorite spot. And so I have actually a very favorite spot on this reservation, which is American Horse Road Creek out there in the middle of the reservation, where you can see the plains, the pines. But we did a land acknowledgement, and this is actually going to be highlighted at the LMI OST, or the Education Conference in December. So it's, it was a part of a production for that, but I took them out there, we talked about the history of the areas, the land itself, the different things that kind of encompass, you know, our lands, basically. And, but it was, you know, to me, it was a very, I wanted to share that scenery with them, because on certain days, you can see the badlands, like they're right here, and the other days, you can't. And that day, we actually were able to see the badlands from where, that spot. And it's, it's a beautiful spot. And I said, this, we got to remind ourselves that our lands are living beings, and everything is a living being, and we have to acknowledge that. So just wanted to share something about that. But that's pretty much all I have. Oh, I also wanted to kind of touch on the Treaty Conference, the Treaty Council. I met with the Sichangu Treaty Council, I went to an in-person visit with them, and we discussed the establishment of their office. You know, I asked about budgets, because their tribe actually gives them over $100,000 in a budget, which establish, you know, they have a very established office, they, I love it, they have an upstairs and a downstairs, they have their secretaries upstairs, downstairs, they have their executive director, and they have a meeting space for their elders. So, you know, I, it was giving me different ideas, and just kind of what we need for ours here. And I just really feel like, you know, and I actually had some elders in yesterday, and it would be nice if we had a space for them, you know, so they could come in, and one of the ladies, and to include our women in these things, because right now, we have a five-member, and they're all male. But I would, you know, I would really like to reevaluate that, and actually include our women into this, because, you know, they have a lot of knowledge as well, you know, and, you know, I know, like, my mother, she was a very strong force standing behind my father, and she kept him, you know, kept him abreast of things, and just kind of giving those, those strong women, you know, those opinions. And so I kind of want to reevaluate, reorganize our organization and include women on this. You know, yesterday, the little elder ladies that came in, they, they had a lot of knowledge, they had a lot of things, you know, the UN, different levels that we need representation on. So there's a lot of stuff that, you know, goes on outside that we do need representation. So I just wanted to touch on those.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I make a motion to approve the Fifth Member's report.
Motion by Councilwoman Lou Hawke Weston, second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Don Regosberg.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Anna Halverson. Troy Little.
Yes.
Fourteen yes, three not voting, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I don't think the Chief of Police is aware that he's on the agenda. I did ask my staff to reach out to him and see if he's available, maybe just to come in and give us a introduction. If he, we got a little report from him, and he kind of hit the ground running, it looks like.
He's going to stop by, he's somewhere, but he's coming.
Oh, okay, so we'll come back to him. So moving on to our two-thirds items. Shall we do it? I think we should. Okay, since IHS is here, let's, we're going to go ahead and let her give her a report. Okay, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So you have the hard copy of the report, and I did email it out to you. Thank you for the time. I just want to highlight some of the items that are in there for this past month, and currently for our service unit. We do have a new Chief Nurse Executive that started in August, her name is Andrea Carpenter, so we're excited about that. We've had several nursing supervisors that have been working in different acting capacity. So our new Chief Nurse Executive brings some experience and leadership, so we're excited about her starting here at the service unit. We also have some new public health service officers that have been deployed. And they're coming to several different departments. We have a nurse practitioner, one officer that's for the lab, a dentist, we're really excited about that, because as we all know, that's a much-needed service, pharmacist, nursing, I believe there's three nurses that have been detailed to our service unit as well. So we, they've been going through orientation, and just the tours and everything, and trainings about the community and the service units. We're excited about that. Also, this past week, the Ford Directions Clinic, we really want to give them a shout-out. They were selected for the 2024 FBI Director's Community Leadership Award for outstanding work with victims of child sexual abuse in partnership with the FBI and other law enforcement agencies to hold perpetrators accountable. It's truly an honor for the team to be recognized for that award. And that was held over at the Four Directions Clinic. So that team was recognized for their, you know, very significant work that they do. That's a challenge and they have to go through a lot of training to have that experience. Also, I really want to recognize the collaboration that our IT and ambulance team have been doing with the OST IT and the OST Police Dispatch Team to implement, basically being on the same 911 communication system process. They've been working on that for several years to improve their communication system. So that's been a work in progress and that seems to be improving. Also, we have made ongoing efforts and our leadership team and supervisors have been submitting employees and teams for the National IHS Directors Award nominations. So we get together and make a focused effort so that we can submit awards to the National IHS for nominations. And we did the same thing with the Area Directors Awards. And we saw this summer that our service unit had the highest number of employee and department team awards out of the whole Great Plains area. So we really want to make sure that everyone knows that we have the best employees in IHS. So we'll continue to focus on that. We've also been really making a focused effort to recognize our employees and departments by submitting, there's a separate awards process where we can submit them for other types of awards for like time off or smaller cash awards for those employees that go above and beyond for our patients as well. These are ways that we can help support the morale and retention in addition to our other efforts. We're getting ready in this next year, you know, we're joint commission accredited and CMS certified and we want to keep that. We're always preparing for survey readiness. But in the next year is when our, we're preparing for another formal survey by joint commission. We're going to have another formal mock survey where we have consultants come in and do a mock survey so that we can get ready for the real thing, which could happen anytime in 2026. But if you look on page, I think it's page three, these are some of the things that we do every day, every week, every month to continue to prepare for survey. These are things that our staff, our supervisors and our leadership team do every day of the week to continue to work on improving patient safety, quality of care, our environmental care walkthroughs, continuing to encourage our patients to submit patient satisfaction surveys. That always helps us improve as well. And then on page four, you have our current finances. I just want to give a shout out to our business team, our revenue generation committee, our coding team. They all do a great job of what I tease them about is squeezing the turnip to really look for any third-party revenue generation that we can bring in, to bring in any money that we're, we're always working towards returning that back to the fund so that we can get whatever we can for our patients, whether that's equipment or additional services. One thing I do want to mention is that, you know, at this time of year, IHS has received advanced appropriations for fiscal year 2026. So our IHS staff will continue to report to work. It'll be business as usual for our IHS staff because of that advanced appropriations funding. I know we've been getting some questions about that, but that's something that we feel privileged at IHS that, that is one less worry for our team.
A question. Go ahead.
Yeah, Sarah, on the Medicaid part of it, you know, the Trump is, according to his bill, wanting to cut Medicaid, is that going, how is that going to impact us? And are we ready for anything like that if that happens?
Sorry about that. If you look at page four, you know, that, that's really where it would affect our revenue is the funds that we bring in through Medicaid. And we've worked hard to really reach out to our patients who are eligible for third-party research, resources such as Medicaid. So we've continued to look at that, you know, if, if, but it's something that's been gradually increasing in the past year. But if there were cuts to Medicaid, it definitely would affect our budget and what types of services that we would bring in. Another change that we're going through is with the one HR system. Right now, our advertisements are closed. With the new transition with, on page six, you'll see that we're still going through a hiring freeze and there's some limits on the positions that will be advertised. Where in October, we'll be going through a transition and the positions will open back up. The National IHS will be advertising the positions nationally. The bigger focus will be on a lot of the direct patient care positions such as doctors, nurses, lab. The series that you see listed are those types of positions. The advertisements will be for IHS nationally. And then the IHS HR leadership will have to request positions on a case-by-case basis to be approved through HHS and OPM. So there, there will be some delays to that process. They'll have to request each of them individually.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I have a message here to ask Ms. Jumping Eagle. What is the ratio of employees getting the Area and IHS Director Awards from frontline staff compared to administrative staff? In the past, it was just administrative staff getting recognition and not the frontline nurses nor support staff. Frontline staff deserve recognition because they're the ones providing patient care.
The list of awards is readily available to all IHS staff and they were sent out to everybody. That was the area awards staff and they were sent out to everybody. So that's pretty transparent. I can forward that to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And anyone can nominate anyone else. It's not limited to leadership-only nominating people. And the same for the IHS Directors Awards. And we encourage in the all-staff meetings and our supervisor meetings that people nominate other people. The focus that we make from a leadership is that we know when the deadlines are, we know that people are busy. We make a focused effort to send out reminders and that we, we want some to be submitted.
Okay, but you're sending that, you're going to send that info?
Yeah. Yeah. And we did, from the area awards, you know, we, we submitted a significant number, but I can't tell you what other people submitted for the nominations. I can only tell you what, you know, what I submitted. I can't see what everybody else submitted.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle. You know, today we're, you know, wondering what is going to happen when, if the shut, if a shutdown does take place at midnight. And we always say IHS is not going to be affected, but I want to know if it is going to be affected in some way. If you could give us maybe an update on, on that part of it. Will the shutdown affect IHS in some way?
We just received from Acting Director Ben Smith, so the information that, that I was just sharing about the advanced appropriations, that went from the IHS Director Ben Smith to all IHS employees, that it's business as usual, that IHS operations are business as usual, IHS staff will continue to report for work and will be paid. And this is because IHS has received advanced appropriations for fiscal year 2026.
It sounds like you guys are okay with the funding part too?
Yes.
Because of the, you know, it sounds like your 26 funding has been awarded? Has it been approved and all of that? So you guys don't have nothing to worry about?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I think people are just kind of wondering if this would affect our IHS because of the shutdown. So I'm glad you updated us on that. The other part I wanted, just to quickly ask you is that, you know, constituents are saying, well, pharmacy needs to kind of get, kind of improve a little bit. I think they're seeing a little bit, maybe some, I don't know if it's unprofessional, just being rude. I mean, you know how our people can, they can feel some of these things when they go into public places. So I know I did got a message from a constituent, said that the pharmacy part needs to be, you know, kind of updated or you need to do something with, with it because they're not happy with it. Improve the pharmacy, it says. There's a disconnect of communication from doctors and pharmacy staff. Refills are a problem, that place is, oh, anyway, he said, more like a clinic than a hospital. I mean, those are some things they're facing and when they go up to the IHS. So just kind of wonder if you are hearing anything like that. I know you have a patient advocate, but your tribal liaison that you have, who's in there now? That since, you know, I think when Cory left, who did, did it get somebody hired in, in there?
The hospital liaison's still vacant.
Oh, nobody's been hired?
Correct.
But the patient advocate?
The patient advocate is Jose Gomez. That's listed on, on one of the last pages.
Oh, okay, Mr. Keith is no longer in there?
He's the, one of our quality management employees. So he was wearing multiple hats and
Oh, okay.
Helping us with that position. But Jose's our patient advocate for Pine Ridge.
Okay, so a lot of the, this can be probably directed to them if they have any concerns over some of these departments.
Yes, but we do encourage, you know, there's a complaint to try to work with the patients and families to resolve it at the lowest level. And we're always looking for feedback on how we can improve the process. And I think especially for pharmacy, if you look on page 17, just that, you know, we're continuing to monitor, especially the phone calls. I mean, that's something that we're always looking at because that had been, you know, an ongoing complaint. And also just the number of employees overall. Pine Ridge has the busiest pharmacies, I would say, in the state. And so if you look at the number of prescriptions for the whole service unit, 30,000 per month in the whole service unit, but 20,000 per month alone is at Pine Ridge Hospital. So one of the things I think definitely that will help is the number of staff. We approved some new positions. And so just in the last month or two, they've hired four new pharmacists in the past couple months and two pharmacy technicians are coming on board. So as we train them and bring them in, I think that will also help with some of the frustrations, you know, of waiting with the refills. And then I know we did have some transition with diabetic patient supplies. There were some frustrations around that. We did implement a standing order around diabetic patient supplies that should help with those frustrations where pharmacists and nurses can order those supplies if a doctor by chance didn't order it for them.
Got a question over here. Go ahead, Councilwoman Spotted Bear and Councilwoman Greenwell. I thought you had your hand up first, but go ahead.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle. So I just kind of wanted to go back to about a month or so ago, we, we talked about issue with our court orders as it pertains to blood draws and stuff. Have we come to any conclusion or remedy of that issue yet? Have you talked to your legal yet on this?
We're still talking with legal and we need, and, and I don't want this to sound like it, but legal needs to talk with legal. That's where we're at right now.
Right, it's, it's just kind of concerning because it came out of nowhere. I mean, standards, I mean, that we followed for decades and decades, all of a sudden, just that the snap of a finger got changed. So I get concerned, you know, just like some of our other constituents here that we end up losing the case because we weren't able to process a, a blood draw or because of a court order, blood draw or something like that that happens. And I hate to see any victim be victimized again, you know, especially being that a lot of our victims are female and children. If we could stay on top of that and try to get that remedied as soon as possible would be for the best. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we have it as one of our high priority items that we bring up with our area and our headquarters team every week. So we're, we're following up with our Office of General Counsel.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Jumping Eagle. I'm, a couple of questions regarding the third-party collections. So you have the, you have the collected year-to-date here and your totals, your totals have, seem to have exceeded your, what your projected goal is here. But with that, with that exceeded projected goal, I look down, I go scroll down and I look at your hiring. Because whenever we, you say our, our hospital is the busiest hospital. We see that every day and you have total positions at 751, but we have 44% vac, we're at a 44% vacancy rate. And if we're the busiest facility, my concern is at a 44% vacancy rate, what kind of service are, is our people receiving at that type of, or type of standard is our people receiving with that type of vacancy rate? And that concerns me because you're receiving the, you're receiving the third-party collections, but you seem to barely have any staff to fulfill the need for the amount of people you're servicing. So my, that leads me to our ambulance service. When I look at your report here, we have this hiring freeze. What is the total staff you have for the ambulance department?
You, are you looking at the ambulance department? I'd have to look at the page. It lists the number of staff on the ambulance department. I believe there's 14 federal staff listed on the department.
I guess I'm just looking at the updates here because my concern is that you have on hold the director, paramedics, EMTs and MBOs. And we know that we are large, a large land-based reservation. And I believe we have four, four ambulance, ambulance service units to cover the whole span of our reservation.
Right.
So my question is, with the exceeded amount in third-party billing, is there a projected goal in, in purchasing more ambulance service units to fulfill the need across the reservation?
Yes, I mean, our goal is to continue to hire into those positions. If you look below on page 16, although we have current number of federal staff at 15, but 14 is the EMTs, paramedics, MBOs, that's total. Below that lists the number of actual positions and what the vacancy rate is for that department, which is 66%. But that's not taking into account the contracts that are also, and I don't have those totals in front of me, but we're using contracts to supplement each of these departments that have vacancies.
Right, but if you were to break them down into shifts, that even lessens your, your manpower or service across the reservation. So 14 people broken down into shift still doesn't meet the need for one of our busiest facilities in this area. So my question- So my question is, you've exceeded the goal for third-party billing. Your, your goal was, let me get back up to it. Your goal for FY 2025 thus far is 64 million, and you've received 72 million, so you, your variance is 112%. So my question is, is there, is there a plan to use the variance or the exceeded portion for more ambulance services across the reservation? You, we can't have four ambulance units in, in just four areas of our reservation. You can't respond quick enough to a need across the reservation. If you get a call in Wamblee, they're not going to wait two hours for someone to respond to that call. Or if you get a call in Porcupine, that's still a long wait for a call from our ambulance service. And when you say, well, we have 16 staff, I understand they work on shift work. So how many of those individuals are broken down? That brings it less. And I use the comparison with our law enforcement, and we're at, I believe, 40 law enforcement officers, and we're a skeleton crew when we're pulling shift work in that, in that manner. So if you're saying 16, that concerns me. How are we providing services in the busiest area? So is there a goal or a plan to purchase more ambulance vehicles to provide services across the reservation?
I, I mean, right now, our, it's not a matter of the number, and if you look on page 16, the number of ambulance rigs, it's more a matter of federal staffing and paying for the contractors. So the department, the way that it's currently funded and the amount of funds that we receive through third-party, we supplement the department with our third-party to make up the difference. And then our goal has been to continue to increase the number of staffed rigs, which we have done gradually since 2021. We started with, you know, what we acquired and gone gradually have increased it since then. So, so yes, our goal is to continue to increase the number of staffed rigs.
And with the, with the hiring freeze to be lifted on October 15th, what is that, is that, is there going to be an extension to that freeze? What does that look like?
I can't answer that question. That would be HHS OPM. So we're just waiting to see what happens with that. But what we are hearing from, if you look on the page, that talks about the 1HR process, that we'll hear more from HHS about the hiring freeze, whether it's extended again or continues. But right now, the hiring freeze limits the types of positions that we can advertise. And then what's happening with 1HR is that each type of position, the IHS leadership will have to ask for an exemption from HHS for each position to be advertised. What the head of our IHS HR is saying, that they're going to work with each CEO at each service unit to ask for the priorities of that service unit. And for us, ambulance is definitely a priority. So we would put that at the top of the list to say we need these positions advertised.
Okay, and I think you kind of hit it on a key word that, that we're trying to steer away from is we're waiting for to hear, at what level are, is, is yourself or anyone in your team advocating to say, you know, we don't want to wait, we need priority in our service area because of our, how busy our facility is? That's what I prefer to hear. I'm sure my colleagues prefer to hear, is we're not waiting for an answer, we're going after an answer so we, we know what to expect. Is what my concern is, unless that requires this body to move forward and ask for help. Okay, thank you.
As a federal employee, I can't lobby HHS or Congress, yeah. But HHS is the one who's making decisions about the hiring freeze, and then they will be making decisions about each of these positions and whether or not they will be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Just to comment off of Councilwoman. We have been lobbying on this, trying to get more funds for ambulance service. Just FYI, all last administration and this one. But again, you know, they always tell us funds are tight, so. But that's pretty much our, our area, is that we have to, if we want more funding for them, we got to go lobby for them. So sometimes we have to scratch each other's back and to support each other.
But, but I will tell you, for our service unit, we've continued to review the org chart. We're continuing to work to make our positions more competitive because we do compete with other ambulance services with contract companies for, in order to hire federally. So we want our positions to be as competitive as possible so that we can recruit more federal employees. We're also, you know, we're also offering EMT courses because we want to grow our own within the community. We, we know that that's a way that, you know, the more that we offer, you know, starting level positions, that that's the way, you know, our people care about our people. And if we can offer those types of positions and courses, that's the way we are going to have people sustainable, that people who want to stay.
That's good. Where is, where can someone find that training?
If they contact our current acting ambulance director, Sam Morgan Frankfurt, or their secretary is Alicia Patton.
And where would they go for that?
It's at the ambulance program. I don't have the number here with me, but.
Does it come with any certifications?
I believe the goal is to set people on the path to get, become an EMT.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Those were the main highlights that I wanted to share with you, but there's lots of information about different departments in there. And I want to thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Sears?
Yeah, just to make a motion to approve her report.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve by Councilwoman Sears, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Councilman Jumping Eagle, you had a question?
Yeah, just real quick, before you run that motion, Dr. Jumping Eagle, you said in one of your highlights that the Four Directions Clinic in Cairo got that award from the FBI?
Yes.
And that's a pretty big award, right?
Right.
Can you state who all works there and give them a shout out?
Yes, it's Fay Hernandez and Francis Morgan, Misty Hunter. Those were the employees that I'm aware of. There's probably more that I'm missing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Secretary, call for the vote.
David Kelly? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall, senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston? Jackie Sears? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl? George Dreamer, junior? Donroy Goldsberg?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson? Troy Little?
Yes.
13, yes, 1-0, 3 now voting. Motion carried. Okay, so the chief's here, so we're going to bring him, bring him out, maybe just do an introduction to the whole, the tribal council and. I know he met with one of the committees so far, but chief, if you could just introduce yourself and just give a little, like you did, a little orientation of what you did, where you come from.
Okay.
All right, it's all yours.
Good afternoon. My name is, for those of you that I didn't have the pleasure to meet, my name is Iver Crowe, III. I was born and raised in Rosebud, from Tsutonga country. I was born and raised there. I went to high school Todd County, or Todd County School District, graduated from Todd County. After I graduated high school, I joined the United States Army. I was 11 Bravo Infantry. Did two, two combat tours in Iraq, one for the evasion, came back for three months, went back for another year. After I got out of the military, in '05, I started at the Rosebud Police Department in '06, January '06. I've been in law enforcement since then, up until September of 2024. September 2024, I wanted to get out of law enforcement. I want to take a break. I kind of, I don't know, just, after being in it for 18 and a half years, I kind of want to take a, a break and kind of just check my options. So I transferred to the Adult Corrections of Rosebud. Was there as a record sergeant for a year. And within that year, I missed being a police officer, so it being in the law enforcement aspect. So therefore, I applied. I, I applied with the OST Department, Public Safety. Got hired on as the patrol captain, started here September 15th. September 22nd, I was appointed to acting chief of police. I'm starting my third week here for OST. So far, I, I really, really like it. It's, I'm learning a lot. It's different, but I'm, I'm learning a lot. I've got a lot of acceptance from my staff, my officers, my support staff. And I, I thought that, you know, coming into it and trying to make change would be, I'd get a whole lot of pushback. It's not the case. I got more praise than, more praise than anything from, from my staff, which is good, helps me out. I'm going into week three, and I told my staff yesterday, because I had a big old staff meeting, that I'm not going nowhere. I'm here to stay as long as I'm happy and as long as I'm doing my job, and I'm doing my job the best I can. I've been a public servant pretty much my whole adult life. I joined the military as a, as a young man, and I've been a public servant as a police officer my whole life until today. One thing that I, I, and I stress highly and I talk highly about within my position and as far as being an administrator of my position, is that transparency is a big thing for me. I believe in transparency 100%, because if you ain't showing that you're transparent, then you ain't showing that you're doing your job. It shows that, that we are out there, we are, we are making those necessary steps to try to combat the problems that plague, plague the reservation. Not only other, other Indian reservations, but this one specifically. I'm here to help. I'm here to try to make it better, and I'm making steps to try to make it better. And sadly, change ain't going to happen overnight. And I, and I'm, I'm sorry to say that. Change is going to, it's going to come, but it's not going to happen overnight, and all I ask is for patience. Give me some time. I'm not saying years upon years, but just give me some months. And if you guys ain't happy, by all means, then I'll relieve myself of my position. But I'm going to make every, I'm going to give 110% in my position, and that's all I can, that's all I can say for right now. But what I can say, in being here three weeks and being appointed as of September 22nd, I adjusted the shifts accordingly. I had, before, before my arrival, I had officers that lived in the East District, patrolling West District and vice versa. Doesn't make sense. It didn't make sense. It's not only patrol-wise by availability, but it's costing OST Department a lot, kind of a, a big gas bill. So it's alleviating that as well, and the wear and tear of the vehicles. Ever since September 22nd, too, what I want to report is that, when I came down last week and I introduced myself, a lot of the concern was we have a big drug problem. We have a big alcohol problem. So as of last week, after our, after I introduced myself, I created a team specifically to address the drug problem and the alcohol problem. And I'm happy to report that, that just in days, I don't know if you guys seen the press release, but we're actually hitting the ground running, and it's a good deal. We took over a half a pound of cocaine off the street. We got a bunch of fentanyl pills off the street and bunches, a bunch of seized, stolen weapons off the street as well. By no means is this, is this going to solve everything, but it's a start. It's a positive start in my, in my eyes. I will continue to do this and keep going in this direction.
Got it.
That's all I pretty much have, and if I just want to take input from everybody, answer questions the best I can, and go from there.
Councilman Greenwell and Councilman Jumping Eagle?
Welcome. You're a sight for sore eyes for me anyways. Sorry, ladies, but he is a golfer. He golfs. He loves golfing, and he's really good at golfing, too, so. But, you know, I was kind of happy to hear they, they selected you as our captain out there, you know, and I think you deserve it. You've, you know, made your mark where you come from, and you've got a lot to offer for us, so. The month ago, our past acting, I sat in your shoes right now where I had limited officers, and we had an issue going on in Manderson District. We were still able to go in there and shut down Manderson for 30 days. We were still able to do coverage across the reservation. We just made some tweaks here and there. So I was kind of disappointed when I heard we're too over, we're understaffed, we can't do anything. And then the first week you were here, I already seen the stuff coming out on the paper and on Facebook and stuff. I was like, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I meant. Hitting these communities and hitting them hard. If we, if we hit these communities, there'll be less calls for services because that's less drugs, less alcohol that is interfering with people's minds and being able to treat each other right, you know, and the behavior, so. I was happy to hear that. You hit the ground running. I sure appreciate it. And I just wanted to welcome you and thank you for, for being here and coming to help us out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Jumping Eagle?
I, too, just want to welcome you to the tribe. I don't know if you realize, but you started this position with one, one checkmark by your name already because you're from Rosebud? No, 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 in a second. No, I'm just saying that, no, just wanted, wanted to welcome you to the tribe.
Thank you.
Councilman Standing Soldier?
I just want to warn you because your job should be about you and how you do it, and walk your own path. Don't ever, ever walk that path of 21 people who are trying to tell you what to do.
Oh, Hachetu? Councilman Goldsberg?
Thank you, Chair. Just want to thank you for coming. I was a, I was a 12 Bravo, too. I served six years in the US Army from 2004 to 2010. Glad to hear that you hit the ground running. That makes me proud. Half-pound off. Half pound off, that's like, like you said, it's no means it's gonna solve everything, but it's a good start. Just like Norman said, don't listen to all 21 members here. Be your own man out there. Don't listen to everybody here, because you're the boss. Don't listen to people out there too, because sometimes they manipulate stuff out there. But overall, you're, you're the head guy. You're here now. Do your best job. We're here to support you.
Thank you.
Because there's a lot of problems around here, and it's just been going, going on too long. Past, we had a lot of chiefs that were here for a certain amount of time, and they're too buddy-buddy with the people within the council and people out there, and it wasn't working out good. So, just want to congratulate you for being here, and sorry from Rosebud, bro. But no, good job though. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. And that's one good, that's one thing that I wanted to, that I brought, talked about last week, is that with me coming to Ogallala country, I don't know nobody. I know, I know...
Oh, oh, my bad. My name's Lockbaum, Divisionary District Representative, Donora Ghost Bear. I'm sorry, man.
Okay, no, it's okay. But I don't know nobody, really. I know people that I golf with. I know people that I used to play basketball against. And basically, I take it as a positive, because I start with a clean slate. And as far as being, walking my own path, I kinda want to do that, and I'm gonna do that. I'm happy that John's in his position, so that John could be that buffer. And whatever I gotta tell John or the president, that's basically what I'm gonna do. It's no disrespect to anybody, but it's to keep integrity with integrity of the department and my, and me doing my job. So if I, if I, if I come off disrespectful in, in that manner, in walking that path that we're talking about, I apologize in advance, but it's, it's not, it's not personal, it's professional.
Councilor Sayers.
Yeah, welcome. And I think one of the things that we do hear about often is the prosecution part from our AG. You know, we have to have complete reports submitted on time for court. So that's one of the concerns. I just wanted to kinda let you know that, you know, that's what happens. A lot of our cases get thrown out, and I'm glad you're doing all this, but just to make sure, yeah, that those are done, so we can get prosecutions. But welcome.
Hey, I addressed accountability. If you ain't doing your job to standard, that old, they were short staff, they need me, they're not gonna get rid of me, that mentality is gone as of, as of my appointment. And so accountability is a big thing. I gotta do my job and other people, I expect other people to do theirs. So that accountability's gotta be there, and it's gonna be there.
Councilwoman Little Haquest.
Yeah, I want to say welcome. I think when you came last week, you did give us a welcome, and it was, I guess I was really glad to hear what you had to say about knowing, not knowing any of them. So you're able to go in with a neutral, you know, just to go in and understanding what needs to get done across the reservation when it comes to public safety. You're not there to be friends. You're not there to be buddies. And you're not there to be any of our buddies here in this 21 council people sitting here today. You know, I think it's good you're gonna come, give us a report once a month, and tell us what, what is going on out there. I know we did say that you would need to come to Law and Order Committee and make a report there. And we're all talking like you're already our chief of police. I think that we want to make sure that, you know, today we know that you were put in as acting, but I asked you that when I met you that day. I said, I hope you put in for it. You know, if you really have some good things that you want to work on within public safety, I think it's really good to know that. So I encourage you to put in for the job. You know, you came on board working as the captain or, you know, whatever, you know, on that Monday. Now you're put in as the acting chief of police. So I'm just gonna encourage you to think about that, you know. But one thing I will say, and I'm gonna say it again, is that you're not related to anybody, and you're not knowing anybody. So it's easy for you to go in and work with them and understand that they're there too, to do a job, you know, just like you. So I just want to share that today, because we do have a lot of drug and issues out there, gun violence, and we really do need to get a handle on it. And so I'm glad that you're, you know, you're working on that to get somebody to help you with that. So just encouraging you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I just want to make one more comment. I mean, Crow Eagle, is that not only John, but you could get in contact with our Law and Order Chair, Lyle Weston too.
He needs to give me his number.
Done, and do my job better. I'll do it, by, by all means. And that goes back to the transparency deal. One thing that I told the, the staff of, during my staff meeting yesterday, yesterday was, we gotta be more proactive than reactive. It's a thing. I did it in Rosebud as the captain. It's, it's, it's a real deal. Cut back on the severity of the crime, cut back on the calls for service. It, it works, and it helps.
All right. Go ahead, Council Kelly.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you for showing up, Dave Kelly, Wounded Knee District. The one thing I can tell you, and please memorize this, Ed Ironcloud. Always remember that name. I'm just teasing. But, you know, one of the key people that you're gonna probably end up meeting here shortly would be Steve Wilson from Emergency Management, and he's got his hand in pretty much everything. So it'd be, you know, wise to, to visit with Steve. He's a lot of, a lot of help and a lot of good information. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point there. We'll be meeting with the emergency crews here shortly because of the weather, so.
Then, just, just, I'm not gonna give the actual numbers of how much officers we have for security purposes, but as of right now, I got four officer positions open. Next week, I am scheduled to do myself in the hiring panels to bring on two more interdiction officers for drugs. So that's kinda, that's kind of a good process to start on. I just kinda want to get everything filled as, as fast as I can, and, and, and get, and get more people on, hands, boots on the ground, and, and just keep going. We started off hard, and we're gonna keep going hard.
All right, it's good to hear. Councilwoman Spatter Bear.
Good afternoon. So I'm not gonna go into too much, because we met already, and we did our, our niceties and introductions. However, Captain Rashar gave us during our monthly, our monthly reports, a breakdown of calls for service, and he broke it down, and we asked for juveniles to be included in there. Is that something that you'll be providing to us as well? Or do you have something similar that you'll be providing that helps us with the breakdown of what, what type of report we'll be receiving monthly?
What I can do is, one good thing that works for me here is, in Rosebud versus here, is that our reporting systems are completely the same. And so for, I ran the monthly reports for Rosebud as far as the calls for service for every community, the adult arrests versus the juvenile arrests, the crime that was committed, and I broke it down in stats as such. So if you guys want juvenile stats versus adult stats as well, I can provide those, no problem. As far as stat.
I have to agree, disagree on that communication. I think they're still using smoke signals over there. Just kidding.
More or less, it was just being tight-lipped, I guess. I'm not trying to do that here. I'm trying to... I want, I want the people to know what, what we're doing and, and how we're doing it, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. The only thing they're ahead of us on is time. That's right, they're one hour ahead. All right, well, thank you, Chief, for, for giving us the introduction. We'll welcome you aboard, and we're looking forward to working with you. You met the whole council here, and if there's anything we can do to help support you and your team, I know we're, we're, I guess, we lack the officers and things like that. So any way we can help you improve those things, let us know.
I appreciate it. Glad to meet everybody here. I'm glad to be here. I'm happy to be here. And I'm just willing to work with everybody, and just let's go, let's, let's go forward in a good way. But next month, I will provide the stats, basically how you want them, so.
Froze you up. I don't know if they could get out of their chairs or...
Chair, I have a community member that would like to address the council real quick with a few items that she's got.
Okay.
Every time my tribal council has a meeting, I always listen on the radio. And I wanted to come this morning, but I'm tired of hitchhiking, plus it was kind of warm. So I waited until, so I was listening and I heard somebody say, mention Public Law 280. Public Law 280 came up in like, before, when I was a freshman in high school at Holy Rosary. It was the first time it came up. And, but the tribal council came, one of the council people came to Holy Rosary and asked me if I could help them. Yeah, I was an actor since I was six years old, so I was one of those people that was always in trouble for taking up for my people, struggling pots and pans and toilet bowls and washing walls. So everybody knew me, and so I asked, they asked me if we could help some way against it, against Public Law 280. And he explained to me that if Public Law 280 was passed in the state of South Dakota, that all the reservation boundaries would be erased, and we would come under the state. I mean, there's seven reservations. Imagine us all coming under the state. And no matter what they say about Public Law 280, we still have to stand up and fight against it. Because all the public law people, I mean, that states like Nebraska passed it, and people that, indigenous people that had, that were living on reservations there, their land was taken. Their boundaries were erased, and some of them went back to Oklahoma. So you can't trust the United States, because you look at all the laws. They were made against our people. How many of us developed laws to use in our behalf against the United States, even though we're a sovereign nation? I don't know anything about us fighting against the United States for what they're doing to us. And we have a feeling. But I just came to say that, Public Law 280 is something you all need to read very carefully. When it came to, when it came to Public Law 280, and we helped them, all we asked for was the telephone books, DM envelopes, and we read the letter. And high school students helped me out. We borrowed a building and set up there. And we asked for telephone, telephone books from every major city here in the state of South Dakota. Because to my knowledge, no public law has ever been rescinded or repealed, except one. So we started addressing letters. We started addressing letters and at random, every phone book. I told them, you don't have to go from page one to whatever. Tear out the papers, tear out the, tear out papers or the addresses and start writing. All the high school people started taking turns coming in and doing it. We did it for a whole week, I don't know how many thousands of letters we addressed. Tribal council member would come over in the afternoons and pick them up. And I put them in according to like Sioux Falls, Rapid City, in boxes. The Rapid City, all the people who lived around there, Sioux Falls, all the people who were around there, who lived around there in the smaller towns. We addressed a heck of a lot of envelopes, and the tribal council sent them out. And what the tribal council did when they hit the South, hit South Dakota in the pocketbook, that was it. Reservation boundaries were erased. South Dakota would have to support us. South Dakota would have to come in and pay for our utilities, pay for whatever we have. Because at that time, there was hardly any jobs, hardly any money, hardly any vehicles. And what we won, when it came to the vote, South Dakota voted against it. 1970, the whole thing came up again, 1970. Public Law 280 showed up again. Gerald Onefeather was the tribal chairman, and he asked me, he said, what did you do in Public Law 580? 280 came up in 1954. So I explained it to him. Hit him in the pocketbook and set up what we did. But I wasn't the one to coordinate that one. I worked for the tribe. I asked him to ask Pat Ketches to, to conduct, to coordinate the whole thing. And Gerald Onefeather, and that's what they call it, paid the people to come in and help out, addressing envelopes at five cents per envelope. And Patricia kept track of everything, and they got paid. We didn't get paid. But that was okay. That wasn't the point there. It was to help our people. Now it's up against us again, and somebody's gonna say, oh, they're not gonna bother us. They can't. They won't. I don't care if we have a treaty. We can take a stand 24/7. But we still have Pine Ridge Reservation. We still have Rosebud. We still have all the reservations here in the state of South Dakota, or Chatty Shockoin. My public law's gonna... I don't know. It's, it's like we need to stand up as a nation and say no. Because they're in violation of a treaty. South Dakota's in violation of a treaty. It became a state in 1889, 20 years after the treaty was signed and ratified. We have a lot of things going for us. We have a lot of things that we can use against them, and the same thing, they would have to support us, they would have to pay your bills, send you the money to run the council, or maybe we won't even have a tribal council, who knows? But I can't see us, no matter what we do and what we say here about land and all this other stuff, we need to stand together on this, set aside our differences, and say no to Public Law 280 if it comes up again. It is a public law. And I called a friend of mine, the one that started Iqwa here from, from Pine Ridge way back in the 1970, and I, I'm still friends with him. Anyway, I called him from Big Mountain, I told him that, uh, Big Mountain was back in a Goldwater, uh, what do you call it, was Public Law 93-531, they were trying to take over some of the Navajo land. And I went down there, but I called my friend, and I asked him, "How many public laws have ever been rescinded or recalled, repealed?" And he said, "Out of all the public laws that have ever been passed, only one was ever repealed." He said, "They're really hard to repeal." Well, the Big Mountain people took a stand against the Public Law 531. And they wanted to do another wounded knee, but I was there, I told them about wounded knee, why we made a stand, it was only political, but in their position, they were up against the public law. The younger people wanted a wounded knee, I explained to the parents, "I'll give you a choice, you have a choice, you wanna take another wounded knee? That's up to you guys, talk it over." But when I leave here, after it's all over, because I'm gonna stay with you guys, I'm gonna go back to my reservation where wounded knee happened. Where are you gonna go? If you take up guns? You're gonna lose your land for good, but it's up to you to make a decision. They came out in a peaceful way when they were supposed to be. Supposed to be, where do you call it, from their land, they still on it. Public Law 5931, 531 is coming up again down at Big Mountain. If I had my vehicle, I'd be, I'd be down there again. Public law. Maybe somewhere, some, maybe sometime this time around, we could all get together and see if we can rescind that or repeal Public Law 531. But this Public Law 280, you know, I was thinking about it, all the laws they ever passed, none of them were on our behalf. Every one of them was after our land. Trying to turn us into their way, trying to make us forget who we are. That's all I came to say. Think about it, think about your people. You, each one of you are the voice of your people. And everybody else that's listening understands that, they will support you as your, as your voice, as their voice, each one of you. Opulitidja.
Okay, uh, at this time, we got two-thirds left. Oyate here. Oh, there's, there's the... Okay. Okay. So, uh, we'll move on to Oyate Health. I believe they sent that out to, by email? Nope, I don't, I don't think so.
If they're not online or present, motion to deny their report.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Second by Councilwoman Sears. Secretary called for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Puer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? V. Frandl? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Don Regal Spare? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Troy Little?
Fifteen yes, two not voting, motion carried. Okay, next agenda. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, aren't you on the board for that?
Oyate Health Center?
Yeah.
No, we, we have Anna.
I thought the chair, the overall board.
That's the, uh, tribal health.
Well, aren't you on that board?
Uh, yeah, the tribal leaders' house board.
Well, can't you direct them to report to the council? They don't ever come here.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. And, and in the past, didn't, didn't you, the council already agreed to that? To order it? Okay, then we'll send out another message. Okay. Moving on, we'll, uh, well, our next agenda item is BIA, and it looks like she's here, so I'll turn it over to her.
Greetings, President Starr comes out, Secretary Two Lance and Tribal Council. Um, the following will highlight the Bureau of Indian Affairs Pine Ridge Agency activities for September 2025. I'm gonna skip to, um, page three, Real Estate Services. With the land exchange update, um, in September 2025, um, the regency, the agency reached out to Appraisal and Evaluation Services Office, or AVSO, Regional Lead Appraiser, Meredith Dominguez, to request an update on the status of the appraisal requests for land exchanges under the Pine Ridge Agency. I explained that at present our exchanges remain on hold due to appraisals pending at the AVSO, many of which have been outstanding for several years. Further, this prolonged delay has become a significant concern for the OST who rely on timely processing of these transactions. Given that OST is our largest customer, we respect, we respectfully requested that these land exchanges, exchange appraisals be prioritized to ensure that we meet our service obligations and maintain trust with our tribal partners. Ms. Dominguez, uh, replied that she has been directed to focus her available resources on a specific set of priority projects, and I've attached a copy of that memo that she sent me. The memo directs AVSO to prioritize appraisals and evaluation services for high priority workloads nationwide, including infrastructure projects. Furthermore, Ms. Dominguez indicated that she has only two staff members to support appraisal workload in the Great Plains and Rocky Mountain regions. And then, um, skipping to page 12, on September 21st, 2025, the September 2025 general assistance regular payments were authorized in the amount of $65,034. And, um, there was an increase, or a decrease in TANF payments of 10%, and so notices were mailed to the general assistance beneficiaries to inform them that effective, um, September 1, 2025, the welfare assistance rates would decrease by 10%, and I've provided a chart there. Um, the Bureau of Indian Affairs and tribally contracted programs set general assistance payment rates based on the Bureau standard of assistance, and I've provided you that, CFR, Part 20, Subpart A. So skipping to the page 18. And Valentina hit on this today, but the BIA has a little bit different schedule for their outages, the systems outages. They are scheduled for September 2020, or 24, 2025 through October 9, 2025, and projecting that the financial system's functionality will be made available again on October 10, 2025. As far as the 93638 programs, um, the outage will end on 10/1, 2025 for existing awards, and 10/11, 2025 for new awards. So right below that is, uh, about the government shutdown and the anticipated impact on the programs. As you are aware, the government, the federal government is currently on track for a shutdown beginning today at 12:00 AM. I was just listening to the news and they were saying that, um, the government shutdown is all but certain after the votes had failed 53 to 44. And so we want to continue to provide transparency around how this may affect our operations and your partnership with us. The anticipated operational impacts, program activities, all non-essential program activities will be paused, this includes community outreach, training sessions, and technical assistance not deemed critical to life, safety, or property. Grant administration, though the BIA does not, um, supervise any of the grants, um, we recommend processing of grant applications, reimbursement, and reporting will be delayed. We encourage you, encourage you to submit any time-sensitive materials as soon as possible. Communication delays, um, response times from our staff may be significantly delayed as only, um, essential personnel will remain available during the shutdown. As to site visits and events, any scheduled site visits, meetings, or events during the shutdown period will be postponed or rescheduled. As for contractor guidance, contractors should refer to their contract terms and await specific instructions from their contracting officer regarding work continuation or suspension. Regarding the tribal programs, um, as Ms. Valentina pointed out earlier, most of the funding for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe 93638 programs have already been awarded, so these programs are expected to continue without interruption during the shutdown.
We have a question, go ahead, Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you. So as of right now, it looks like, um, both bills have got shut, have been shut down. So, that should say a lot. But I have a question regarding our wildfire, our BIA wildfire. I'm, I was looking through your report, but I don't see anything for the January update. Is there anything to update for January and what's gonna happen with our BIA wildfire, our BIA fire?
For September?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, next, so is it, is it confirmed that BI fire will, um, will be no more and they're gonna be moved under the United States Fire Service?
That's what the proposed memo is saying, yes, and I didn't bring a copy of that with me.
Okay. And if it's proposed and it happens, what will happen with our firefighters?
They're expected to continue. Uh, Mr. Heath Estee has a meeting to attend in, I think, the second week, week in October, and he's gonna, um, provide us, or he's gonna actually take a lot of questions. He did, um, outreach everyone and request, um, any questions that they had on how it would affect them, and he's gonna take all of those questions with him and present them at that hearing. So we should know more before the end of October on how that will affect our program. But they're expected to be able to continue to work, it's just a matter of who they would be underneath which program. I think it's supposed to be National Park Service or Fish and Wildlife, something, some other agency.
Okay, and I guess my question is, if we have a co-stewardship, shouldn't we be a part of that conversation?
Yes.
So would, when would have we have been extended an invite to participate?
We'd have to check with Olivia Steve, um, she's the one that sent that memo down, and I know that she is gonna be participating in those meetings as well.
Okay, I'll look for that email.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Puer.
I ask you this every meeting, what's the status of execution fees?
Well, they're going quite well. We did end up paying the second portion of the 2019, which I worked with Ms. Montlow on that, and, um, I also, we were also able to, um, issue the second half of, or the first half of 2025, um, which would be, um, January to current, and then, so, um, I did receive packets on the 2022 and, or 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2022 from Tony Montlow, and I'm gonna work on getting those, getting that funding to the tribe.
I, I, I guess I don't, I can't follow you on... I guess I can't follow you on paying only half. You know, because the people that lease the land pay it in at the time when it's due. But the Bureau, when it comes back to refund the tribe, only pays half. And for jumping around in years, I guess I just can't follow because that's already paid in. But really, you're telling me you lost the funds. You don't know where they're at.
So the reason for the half year is because the tribe is on a calendar year. And the information that was provided by Ms. Montlow was January to present. And that basically is Ms. Provost's salaries.
I understand that part. I'm looking for the, when do we get reimbursed at 100%? Because it's been paid in. Those bills are scheduled to go out tomorrow, supposedly, according to the grazing ordinance, and be paid in by November 1st. That's in range. Leasing is on a calendar year. And that's a different pot of funds. But what I'm asking for is that execution fees that's derived in range units. I forget it.
Go ahead, Councilman Sears.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the report.
I have a motion by Councilman Sears. Second by Councilman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Stunning-Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall, Sr.?
Yes.
Yes.
Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Sr.?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Be Frando?
14 yes, 1 no, 2 not voting, motion carried.
Let's do it, early. Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for coming and giving the report.
Thank you.
Okay. All we got left is two-thirds.
Let's do them. Okay. This next one, Chair, probably take a couple hours. Are we moving on, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is education, right, Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, so there was action taken our last education meeting over in Wamblee on the American Horse School Board. The action was to suspend the board for 30 to 45 days and forward to council. Based on documents provided to the committee. Or they were provided to Dana, our tribal ed director, and she presented them to the committee. So the committee took that action and it's here today. Angela was supposed to get copies of the documents that we got. Stacy, I don't know if she gave them to you. Yeah, they're large documents. So I had her do a few copies and we could send them around. Maybe start over there to the, maybe start with the people who didn't get to see them. Those of us on education got to see them. She also emailed them to your emails. And Rayan is our education attorney also. The school's attorney asked me if they could come to the meeting. I said, yeah, it's an open meeting. I think they kind of want to address the council on the action we took or the action we might take, possibly take, or whatever. So Chair, I think this time, if you allow, Alice is here, she's a principal, and one of the school board members looks like Willie. Clifford's here. I don't know if we want them to address the council now or wait till after the council looks at the documentation provided? Or if you want to go into executive and discuss, or?
Yes, go ahead.
I think we might have to go into executive because if names come out in this, then we don't want to broadcast across the rez and wherever else. That's only my opinion.
Is that your motion? Motion to go into executive by Councilman Poyer. Got a second? Nobody's second, all right. Motion died.
Okay, so just proceed forward?
Yes.
Okay, so those of you who have your phones or your emails, the documents provided were on the school board expenditures. That's why the action was taken. I don't know if everyone got to view the documents you got them. I know in the past, the same action we took as an education committee and then the tribe on Porcupine School was the same, kind of the same thing. We took that action. I guess I'll let, it's up to you, Chair, that Ms. Phelps and Mr. Clifford address the council.
Yes, hold on, go ahead. If you would come up. Just identify yourself.
Alice Phelps. Welcome and thank you for this time. And it's an honor to be here. I'm the principal of American Horse School, Alice Phelps. And I also have our board member, Vice Chair, Mr. Willard Clifford. And I want to thank you for giving us this time. So we were at the last meeting and at the education committee meeting, the OST Education Committee meeting in Wamblee. And so we wanted to take a look at everything. And I know you have all the documents ahead of you with the financials. And I just wanted to, before I jump in, is there anything you'd like to say? I just wanted to go ahead and read for you. I just want to humbly ask you all if you could allow our school board to remain in place and not suspended. I have American Horse School take the following. They have corrective actions they've been putting together. What they want to do is to immediately, to ensure compliance with the Oglala Sioux Tribe, the law, and specifically the OST Education Code. And to implement responsible fiscal management of the American Horse School budget, the areas of action, the school board meeting schedule, number two, school board budget and policy revisions. So number one, the school board meeting schedule. Modify the school board meeting calendar for the remainder of the 2526 academic school year to adhere to the 24 school board meeting paid with stipend limit set in OST Ordinance 07-. Year-to-date, school board meetings total since July 1, there's been eight, including the elected school board currently suspended, or five, right? And interim board per OST Education Committee, we have three. 16 school board meetings paid with stipend remaining for the 2526 school year, update calendar accordingly. American Horse School will no longer hold school board meetings immediately after policy working sessions to reduce the number of school board meetings to the 24 school board meetings paid by stipend limit. Any meeting required beyond the 24 school board meetings paid by stipend limit shall be unpaid. This may include meetings for expulsion hearings, disciplinary grievances, board member complaint hearings, et cetera. To the greatest extent possible, such hearings will be scheduled on the same day as board meetings and included in the established meeting schedule. Where hearings cannot be scheduled at the same time as a scheduled school board meeting due to time limits imposed on holding hearings in American Horse School policies. They will be unpaid if payment would exceed the 24 school board meeting paid limit. Schedule, we will schedule a policy working session anticipating total of two to three days to revise any existing policies, which we do annually. Account for other required meetings in the board meeting schedule such as ONAC Education Committee meetings where board attendance is required or such board trainings. Number two, school board budget modifications. Budget modifications to the 2526 school board budget to align with the overall budget reductions that are necessary due to the reduction in overall federal school funding. We'll eliminate board incentive bonus line item. No further board incentive or bonuses for the remainder of the 2526 school year and in future years. And reduce stipend line items to reflect no more than 24 paid school board meetings per year and to reflect other stipends for working sessions and attendance at other meeting types that have been allowed for other tribal schools, such as ONAC training policy working sessions. And reduce board travel line item to reflect meeting schedule changes. And number three, policy updates. American Horse School policies and procedure revisions delineate between the various meeting sessions requiring school board member attendance, school board meetings, board working sessions, policy working sessions, and other meeting attendance, ONAC Education Committee, et cetera. Establish a stipend schedule for the various types of school board attendance. For example, school board meetings could be regulars.
Question?
Yes.
Do you have an extra copy for Councilman?
Yeah, I'm unclear as to what she's reading. And I didn't get a copy of the document, so.
I don't think anybody got a copy.
Sorry about that. This is what American Horse School School Board corrective action plan would be. So this is providing parameters. Yeah. I have this letter. Should I read this?
Okay. Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the long day. I understand everybody's kind of getting tired. I kind of want to keep this short and sweet. We could drag this out. I could get up here and talk for hours about, I've been a school board member now for five years and vice president for two years. So this was all new to me. And a lot of the complaints that were brought forward were, you know, if you want to complain, it's a legit complaint. So I'm not here to say that any of the things they complained about, we didn't do. We're transparent. We're not sitting here saying that we didn't do any of these things. They did happen. Sure, there was a lot of school board meetings that happened and there were reasons why. To the outsider, it's not going to sound very good because there was a lot of meetings and it was, it's the way our policy is written. And whenever there's student issues, there are staff issues, we have to get involved. And we got to change them policies. That's one of the action items. And these action items are not done by the board. The board has been on suspension now for, I believe, 45 days. The board hasn't done any of this. This is a school that supports the board. It's kind of a different story compared to the other schools. So I'm not sitting here, I didn't do any of this corrective action plan, although I agree with everything on there. That is a great plan they put together. And there's a letter supporting the board too from some of the staff at American Horse. That is great. I didn't ask for that. I just really think that is really a nice thing here. And, you know, and I respect the council, not only as a board member, as a tribal member, also a tribal employee. A lot of you I know and I've worked around and worked with. And I pride myself on being honest and upfront. So if I would have known a lot of this, you know, accusations that were coming through, you know, I would have, we didn't get any complaints. It was, we were just kind of blindsided. So when I went to the meeting in Wamblee a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, I, along with the other board members, were clueless on what we were getting accused of. And on paper, it looks like it's a bad thing. But in real life, it was just dealing with business, school business. There was a lot of stuff we had to do at that time. Did we have to have that many meetings? No, no, we did not. Are we ever going to do that again? Absolutely not. But I think I wouldn't treat my own employees the way we've kind of been treated to get, you know, to get suspended over a lot of accusations that we didn't even get, we didn't even know what they were. So if you wanted, I mean, I respect everybody here for whatever decision you come up with. But like I said, we can- But like I said, we can push us on and keep going on and talking about it. That's how I feel. And I'm not speaking here for the board. I'm here speaking as myself. Alice has more to say.
I just want to say thank you, Will. It's an amazing board. We work together. We collaborate. We are totally transparent in our meetings. I give the full school report, our attendance. We average about 220 of our students there. We're making gains. That's the most exciting part is where our students are in the green showing towards proficiency. So that's what matters. I'm really proud of the fact being there, you know, we are totally transparent. We had an onsite audit last, last year was onsite with financials and there was zero findings. We had good audits. We also had the BIE audit. This year, we're having a desk audit. We're totally in compliance with the state as far as our accreditation. So we're accredited through the state of South Dakota. We're accredited through the tribe with Cognia. And we're, I mean, with COSA and we're also accredited nationwide with Cognia. We just finished that last year, so we're good for another five years. We do our best to try to ensure that we meet the needs of all of our students. And our board is an excellent team. I mean, I'm not just saying that they are. They're all about the students and we work hard to do what we can. And we are willing to make changes with our policy so that I can handle those things. I can set up the interviews. I can handle the parents and stuff. And then bring my recommendations to the board rather than having them get involved with sitting in on those and student expulsions and such. So those are some of the things that we are willing to change in our policy because it is in our policy. And I know they did have 33 meetings and surpassed the 24. So we also meet with their, when there's safety issues and we had shootings in the housing and we had to come to the, to the meeting. We came to housing, the next day we came to law and order. So those were counted as meetings, you know, in there as well. So we really try to ensure that we provide a safe environment conducive for learning for all of our students and our staff. And this is a lesson learned that we stay within our parameters and within our line items with that as well. So we did have a lot of changes at the school and things are moving along nice and smooth. And we're just really excited for the school year. I mean, I'm excited with all of our gains that we're making with student growth. So just want to thank you all for your time.
Go ahead, Counselor, jump in.
So Alice, this document you just provided us with your corrective action plan. It states year-to-date, school board meetings total since July 1, 2025. And it says eight, which looks good. But the report we got was from last, last July 2024 to, I think it was July or August 2025. And can you recall how much board meetings was on that one? Plus additional stuff on that report also. So, I mean, that, that's the reason why our, that's the reason why the committee made that, made their decision was you went way over the 24 board meetings.
Yeah.
And the other thing was, and in here it says that there will be no more bonuses.
Yep.
That was the other thing was the bonus part. The document that was passed out only goes up to April 2025. I don't know what happened to the document. The one Stacy passed out to us in Wamblee were, were pretty current. And that one showed. That one had additional expenditures.
Yeah, there was a one return to work incentive that was given to the staff as well as the school board. And I've been, this is my fourth year at American Horse School. And to my knowledge, it's always been given to the school board members in the past as well. So it's always been given because the money was available at that time is based upon funding. But we are delineating, we're taking that out where there will no longer be any of that for the school board from here on out.
You're done? No, Counselor, Counselor Spott up here.
Thank you, President, and good afternoon, Ms. Phelps. I guess my question, according to the policy and the way I'm looking at this budget worksheet as the, I'm just seeing these numbers for the first time and it's, it's really, it's kind of astonishing because it looks like, does the board on payroll? Because that's, I have to ask that because that's how it looks according to what I'm looking at because of how high these numbers are. And I'm not sure if we're still investigate, under, it's still under investigation. So I'm not sure on what I can speak on and what I can ask. Because there's bonuses on here that are, they're, they're so often and so high that, you know, I just, I question a lot of that. Three a year? And they're, they're pretty. Okay. So I guess this is for the attorney. What, if this isn't, I'm still under investigation, then why is it here? What, what's the intent with this? Because I.
The correct word to use is review. So there's, there's a review that is occurring to make sure that the expenditures were within their policies.
Okay.
And so I think the committee gave them 30 to 45 days to complete that review.
So if it's still under review, then I guess my question is why is, why is it here until we see the review? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor on serious.
Yeah, good afternoon or evening now. You know, the one that we got on the email is dated August 22, 2025. And I think the administrative costs that we do have in here that I see, that it was budgeted, school board was, the, it was budgeted at 296,252. And then what was spent was 325,253.45. And then it's in a negative of 29,000. So where would the money come from to offset the proposed corrective action plan one, the 100,000? Where would that come from? Oh, it's, it's 250,000. So.
Hi Jackie, my name is Stacy. I'm just trying to answer your question. So the school receives about 900,000 a year in administrative costs. So those line items, they had not done a budget modification to zero them up to account for the extra funds. So the, even though the line item was expended, the overall administrative cost grant was not expended. So no student funds from ISAP or the other funds were used in the administrative cost. You can't supplement administrative costs with ISAP. So there was money still there. It just was, the budget modifications weren't done. The other budget sheet I handed out, the 250, that was our proposed budget for this coming year based on, you know, some of the cuts that we received. And so it was lower. And then based on that corrective action plan, if that were to go in, then it would cut from that 250 down to roughly that 128. Does that make sense?
It just seems like the, there's still going to be some more traveling because I think the last meeting we talked about, there's not going to be an, if we do keep the board in, that it's going to probably be based on volunteer. But that's.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah. And, and, you know, just, I'm just explaining that budget. So like in the past, they would budget for, like they had five elected members. And if they went to like ONEC or a training, and so they scaled back to where maybe only two would go instead of more. But I mean, it's the council's prerogative if you guys would like to see them kind of refrain from those things overall. I mean, I think that's kind of what they're looking for is, you know, what direction do you want them to take, you know, in terms of that dialogue? They are required as a school board to receive 40 hours a year of training. So sometimes that would be like those ONEC that have people come in and do training. So I mean, I, I think it's just meeting those two things. But I think certainly the, everything's on the table for discussion based on kind of the guidance you're going to want to provide. So, you know, and like Alice mentioned, you know, the school went through, you know, their audits are completely clean. Last year, the year before, there was only a finding that had like, there were two or three minutes that weren't updated when they went to review them, but no financial findings. The BIE did an onsite review where they reviewed all the finances, all that. And that came up with no findings as well. We provided that report last time. We could get it to everybody else. And then they just went through three accreditation visits. And that's not to say there can't be improvements at all. But I think what we want to do is just make sure there's, to let you know there was oversight going on as well. And so, but I hope that answered your question about the budget.
Counselor Kelly.
What's that? I just got a quick question, you know, on the American Horse School budget, 2310 Board Services, you had a previous budget of 250,985 and then you reduced it down to 128,830 and 35 cents, which means you had a cost savings of roughly 122,154.65. But in your corrective action board plan, it doesn't say where this money is going to be obligated. Is it going back to the children? Is it going back to food services? Where's it going? Because it's not identified in here. It's a good question. So in the school funding world, the school gets an administrative cost grant to fund like the business office, school board and all of those things. And if you have savings there, that money can go into supplement the other parts of the budget. So that could be moved into, like you said, food service, facilities, hiring more teachers, things like that. It can't go the other way. So like the ISAP, which is the Indian Student Equalization Program, so like the per pupil funds, that cannot go into administrative costs. So you have to fund your school overhead out of administrative cost only. So in this scenario, that money would go into school operations, any savings out of that administrative cost. But this kids' money can't go into administrative costs. It can't ever. So those deficits are those things you were asking? So none of the student money ever goes into board expenses and things like that? Did that answer your question? It does, but I still don't know where it's identified to go. You know, I'd like to see something. Sure. Probably, right. So like, just to give you an example. So this year, we had 240,000 overage in facilities because we never get enough money. So that would, that money in next year would go in to help with the facilities, which is lights, building, fuel, electricity. Or we had a $78,000 overage in FACE because we don't get enough money. FACE is like the little kid program. So in this new scenario, that money would go towards those overages for next year under the schools, you know, planning budget-wise. No, they, these are just generalized questions. And I don't sit on the Education Committee, but I, I did see the numbers and it's, it's a, it's a, it's awakening for me because I didn't know it's really happening. So. So I'm just explaining. Yep, yep, yep. I understand. So in some of that, you know, there's, there's money in, and it's, so I'll say it like this. So the policy and the past business managers would allow those expenses based on the policy, which is why the audits are clean. Is, so, sorry, so. Is, is that an internal policy of American Horse or them, the federal standards under the BIE? Both. Both, okay. So it's our school policy, that policy is given to a part of this body for review and approval? So we give that every year to the tribe to be reviewed and approved. And then we operate off of that. So I think I like this conversation because it's kind of like every year that is approved by the tribe for operation. Every school does it. So I think when that policy is being reviewed, that's a really good time to have that conversation about how you can fix these expenses. Because the school takes that and follows it. And then when you do audit, the audits come in and say, here's your policy, here's the federal regs, and here's the expenses, and then they match all that up, right? So when we're sitting here saying, as you guys are struggling with, hey, our school has had clean audits the last at least two years, that statement is to say, although those expenses can be better, it was within the confines of that policy in accordance with the BIE and the Kadel Thorsten, who is our auditors. That's not to say it can't be better. And I think that's what we're proposing as this corrective action plan is a conversation to say, okay, this is, you know, I even thought about if you guys would enter, interested in having your three members sit with them during a period to kind of have a interim board and a elected board, you know, just to kind of provide some more oversight for people for a while. You know, because right now we have John Haas, Richard Ironcloud and Robert Tukrow serving as interim. And if you want a joint board for a while to kind of make sure the ship continues to be steered, you know, I mean, I think all conversations are on the table right now. So does that answer some of your questions, David? It does, Stace. Thanks. Like I said, I'm not fluent in, in this language. I'm just asking some questions. Thanks.
Counselor Randall.
You, thanks. For the record, for the council, we didn't take verbal complaints from people to use against, not use against, but to use in this process. We, we kept reiterating that with you, but you guys keep saying that if people said this, we should be allowed to respond. That didn't happen. We took the numbers and looked at the numbers. You know, to take and, and take advantage of that policy is not good policy. It's not a good thought to do that and then come back and say, well, we could do this now. It's a bad business to say that. So. But I just want to make sure you, the people understand that we did not take verbal complaints against you guys. We took the numbers and looked and reviewed the numbers. That's all. Fact was in front of us. That's what we acted on.
No, and, and we appreciate that, Beat. It's just, you know, without context, it's like your guys is like, you know, there's mileage in there, there's hotel, there's per di, you know. I'm not, I'm not agreeing with it. I'm just explaining it, you know? And I think we're asking for a conversation to say, okay, you know, what else do you guys want to see? You know, we, we kind of gave you all the documents. The school is saying, well, we think we followed our policy. Our auditors said that, the BIE said that, but let's have a conversation about that with you guys and explore that deeper because obviously, you know, we, we want to kind of do what's best for the students and, you know, we're here having that conversation. So like those expenses existed in the admin cost grant only and they could be better. I don't disagree. And we tried to put forward a plan. We think that captured an effort to be better.
Counselor Stanislaw.
Wow. Um, I think we're, the real reason for you to be standing in front of us is, is there a reason not to put the board back in place? And is there a reason for us to move on with another review of your school? I'll be honest with you. This complaint opened doors, huge doors, of not just this complaint, of more complaints. And until our tribal ed department comes up with their answers and their suggestions onto where we're gonna go, and as far as the sitting board, they're gonna be looking at different perspectives in your school. So I appreciate everything that is promised to be done, but a lot of what was done in the past cannot be undone. The, the doors that were opened, if we sit here and we say, okay, you guys go ahead and move on from this day forward, we will be damaging American Horse School unless everything comes back. And we're not doubting, maybe you guys are a hundred per second effective, but let us hear that from the people that are looking into it. Because if we don't hear it from them, there's just us talking to each other. And we shouldn't be doing that. This is probably a workable solution. But let's get everything out the door so your school can proceed as a school with no issues, no complaints, nobody banging on doors wanting to talk down everybody. Let's just let it go where it goes. And let's, let the tribal ed department come back with their findings, because right now we could say, yeah, go ahead, go back into position. Everything's peachy keen. And a month down the road, it all falls by the wayside. But guess what? This whole council is in trouble. We're in trouble because we allowed it. So we're just protecting everybody's best interest. I hope you guys understand it, and that's my perspective of the whole thing. Thank you.
Councilman Poyer.
I hope I didn't hear you correctly, but did you say they get three bonuses a year? When, when's your next school board election, Dan? I wanna.
We'd like to say though, Davey, is the school board doesn't get those if the staff doesn't get them. So it's not like something selected outside of that. And those all go into our budgets that get approved by the BIE. A return to work, and it's, uh, retention incentive, and then Christmas, you know?
The, the, the reason I'm saying that.
Sure.
We've, we've taken school boards out, removed them from office for doing that. And now we have this one doing it. It, it doesn't seem very fair to, one group gets removed for it, and the other group get, uh, you know, so.
So.
But I, I guess, and I heard, I think I heard you say that the education department or education committee approved those policies.
Yes, every year you do.
So if the education committee approved those policies, then they're saying that it was all right.
Cause we had no disallowed costs.
Yeah, but what I'm saying though, so it really falls back to the education committee. Or whoever approved it on our side, the way it looks to me, cause of school board took it to education committee, they approved it. Then the education committee is just as guilty, school board. Cause they approved it.
We're only explaining to you how we understand it works.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, just kind of curious here.
Yeah, I mean.
Because.
You may just not see it right, like I said. Removed boards because of being that.
No, the ed code does not provide an expenditure limit, so that would be good to, if, if the council wants to limit total budget, board budget, and provide that amendment to the ed code.
I think what that means is like, some places say your board expenses can't be more than like three or four percent of your, you know, budget expenses, so that you have a level in line. Cause it, it doesn't exist right now, and like in the ed code, it doesn't say. It, I, I feel bad explaining this. I'm just trying to bring clarity. Like there's nothing in there that says you don't do those incentives. I'm not saying it's okay. I'm just explaining how we got here, so.
Councilman Kelly.
Uh, you know, I guess this, I guess my question is gonna relate back to some of the, the older council people that sit here, but, uh, didn't, uh, five or six years ago, didn't we have the superintendent? Uh, being charged with theft also from the American Horse School?
Right.
And, you know, that was substantially a large number. Did, did, or, or I guess like, one of my questions would be, are some of the school board members still a carryover from that period? So apparently we haven't learned anything from that time? I'm just asking some questions.
I can't speak for the other board members, but like, like six months after I got on, she retired. So there was a lot, a lot of history, a lot of stuff happened at American Horse School, and it was, it was not good.
Councilor Little Hug Weston.
You know, I just wanna, trying to get, uh, looking at all these documents here and, you know, I sat on the school board too for Pine Ridge for a couple of terms. So I know what it takes to be a school board member. You know, and I think that, um, I know they allow you so many meetings per year, per month, and how much they're gonna pay you, but my question to you is, um, you gave us a, this, and you have previous budget and proposed budget, proposed twenty-twenty-five. Is that the board's proposed budget? Previous budget, and then now this is their new budget? Okay, so you have all these line items in there. Do they sign like a ten-ninety-nine? I meant to get, uh, like when you get a site pin, a board site pin. How do you guys get paid? Is it like with account, like an accounts payable type where you pay your board members off of that?
Yeah, they have to account for it.
Okay, so, but you have, um, I wanna ask you, when you put this budget together, did this come to the, uh, education committee for approval? Or did, uh, the committee have any say in it? Or did you guys just, the board approved it and then it just went on?
So a lot of the times they roll over, so that two-fifty represented kind of a rollover with some scale backs, because the budget was scaled back about five percent?
Yeah.
And then the, the right column, the far right column is based on if you implement this corrective action plan, that accounts for the limited meetings and the reduction and all that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, your budget kind of went down now.
For the board-related expenses, yes. And so, so like what, what Dave was asking is like, where would the savings go? So then the school would take that savings and put it into, like next year when we have, like, we're over two-hundred-and-forty-thousand in, um, facilities, because we never get as much money at a hundred percent. So it would fund that kind of stuff. Um.
But when, uh, I guess what I'm trying to get at is your policies, and I think they were brought up earlier, were approved by the school board, by the school board, but not only them, the education committee.
Yeah, every year we have to do that. Every school, as far as I'm aware, every school submits those for approval.
We send it out thirty days to the community.
And we do a thirty-day review in the community too as well.
Okay, and then, um, so you're actually supposed to have twenty-four meetings per year, but you went over thirty-three meetings, and you actually went over by nine meetings.
Yes.
You know, for, uh, the year of the twenty-twenty-four year, fiscal year, or whatever you go by. So in there, I have to say, you know, that your meetings are probably all justifiable? Are they all justified?
Yes.
Okay, with minutes and
Yep.
why you had to meet on that day and, cause I was just looking at the dates of when you were meeting. You know, you might have three meetings in February, but each one you have minutes backing it up to say why you guys met.
And we, we submitted those to the ed committee
Okay.
as well.
Okay, so all of that, I'm, I'm just kind of, uh.
And some of that, Sonia, um, and this is lesson learned, like for a smaller school like us. Um, and I'm, I'm just explaining, like I said, so like the expulsion hearings, the school board hears them. And so in the policy, if I expel Alice, she has five days to have an expulsion hearing. So if you have a regular meeting the first week of the month and that expulsion happens, and there's not a finance meeting till the third Wednesday, then you have to have that meeting according to the policy in between. Same thing with a staff member. If you fire a staff member, they have five days to request a hearing. So what we're proposing moving forward is to kind of eliminate those thing, you know, to eliminate some of those. The school would set up an expulsion hearing, and you'd adjust the policy so the student would keep getting educational services outside until the next meeting is, the next regularly scheduled meeting. So like those are corrections we can make to the policy to get rid of the need to have so many special things like that.
Hmm.
So that's what that corrective action plan tries to capture. We might not have explained that well.
Okay, yeah. I guess I'm just trying to get a understanding of, um, American Horse School, you know, and the budget, cause I'm not on education committee also. But I'm just trying to understand why the committee had, uh, come to that point to suspend the board. And I know that it has happened before with Eagle Nest, they also were suspended at one time, Womblee, uh, a crazy horse school, and as well as, uh,
Porcupine.
Porcupine and, yeah, uh, Lone Men. Uh, so those schools were also suspended due to things like this.
And, and I, and I think maybe to learn a lesson and to expand this process is, you know, maybe those budgets should also be presented so that the committee sees them and can ask questions too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that would probably be a good lesson learned.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to allow for the
Yeah, for sure.
committee to see it and approve it. And that way, uh, there's, it's a record that you guys have a, so you have oversight there.
And I think, um, yeah. And, and I just wanna throw this out there, cause I've had a bee in my bonnet about it. Um, I, I would also like to encourage and, you know, I mentioned, um, I think it's important for the ed committee to, not the ed committee, the ed department to establish a process for this stuff. Um, and please don't take this the wrong way, but like, imagine if I walked upstairs right now, walked into your guys' treasurer's office, grabbed three or four files and walked out and took them to a newspaper. And the reason I say that is, that was the incident that we had with this. Rather than have a form like where you do, uh, I'm just gonna use air quotes, whistleblower, right? Where you come in and I say, well, hey, you should go look at this, this, this. It's on this committee, it's in this file drawer, that, and then Dana shows up and says, I need to see all this stuff. Like, this stuff got printed, removed from the school, taken out of the business office, and turned over. I mean, we have video of somebody shredding documents and taking documents out of the business office, which you guys would probably call that a crime if I walked upstairs and grabbed a bunch of financial documents and walked out. So I'm not saying you shouldn't have a process, but the process should probably be better. Cause then if you show up at the school, you could request all that, which we did. Ryan and him requested it. We made copies, we made binders, we brought it. But.
But it's, so are you saying that somebody went, also went into the business office and took these documents?
And others.
And others, uh, who would that be? I meant, what, what?
You probably wanna go into executive if you want that answer.
Okay, cause I really have a, um, I don't know if, um, is it in the, I know that education committee has the tribal education department that's supposed to be overseeing all the tribal schools, our schools across the reservation.
Yeah.
And I know they constantly tell her to do this, do that, go over there and get that done, get this done, and you know, we was just told something earlier today by the treasurer, you know, about what kind of council people we are. You know, I'm hoping that's not what, that happened. You know, I hope that we can work in a professional manner to do things correctly. So, you know, from, maybe from the, from moving forward, maybe there has to be something like that put in place also for, um, so that tribal education agency. Cause I know a lot of times she's not, she don't want to go do, maybe she's not, doesn't just want to go and do it. You know, there's probably, in some ways, she wants to handle it, but not in that way. You know, so I understand that part too. But I really think that we, some kind of protocols need to be established with, so that all the schools understand that.
Yeah.
This is who's gonna come in, we are gonna allow, uh, for that, uh, you know, person to come in and do all of this. Cause I wanna know, the review that we're talking about tonight, uh, who's doing that review, Ryan? Who's doing the review on this? Who did you guys assign? So they're just gonna look at all the expenditures?
And our understanding is, they're gonna take the policy, take the stuff and say, was this allowed in here? I mean, but you, like when Ryan and him requested the financial stuff, you know, the school got together everything, got together a bundle and brought it in. And also, stuff was taken out of the school ahead of time, not at the request of tribal ed or the committee.
I think that's where you need to clarify that, Stacy, cause you just made it sound like we went in there and got these documents.
I didn't say that.
And when we first started this meeting, these documents were provided to committee. You can ask our attorney here.
Yep.
She knows they were provided to us. We didn't, we didn't ask nothing. This wasn't even on, nothing until it was brought forward. So I think we need to clarify that.
Yeah, absolutely.
The way you made it sound like, we directed Dana to go in there and bring these documents forward. They were brought to her. We don't know who presented them to her.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you do. You have video.
Yeah.
So welcome, you can tell us who it is. That way it clears the air and doesn't look like we, we put our tribal ed up to this, cause we didn't. It was presented to us.
We can't disclose, I mean, the school attorney just said, don't, we can't disclose it. So what? Yeah, yeah, and, and I think that's, and my only recommendation is like, you just have a process for this, cause the minute we got all this stuff, we sent it on, you know? We did. We did. We did report it.
And they were arrested.
No, it's, we got the interim school board permission to open the process, cause we didn't have any school board to call during that time. We're in weird waters, guys. I mean.
All right, I'm gonna call a point order here. We have, we have a order, we're going, and Councilman Stanislaw told you you're about third in line.
So, Councilwoman Sears, you're.
Yeah, you know, I think a lot of times we do send our tribal ed out to retrieve the, uh, policies, retrieve certain things from schools, but the door. retrieve certain things from schools, but the door gets, she's ordered to leave, or, it happens in these schools. It's not everybody's cooperating with our tribal ed department. But I also know that, um, past, the past, uh, some school board things that had happened, um, incentives were deemed disallowed. So, you know, those are the type of things that we don't know yet until it's being reviewed. And, you know, so I think that we just need to stick with our resolution and support, because it did, we addressed it twice in education committee. And I think we just need to, um, support our resolution and, and, um, see where it goes from there. So that's, you know, something I just wanted to say.
Councilman Randall.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that too, Stacy, we didn't go around stealing papers, and we didn't take papers from people and address that way. We keep saying that over and over, but we didn't. We, we did the numbers that were in front of us, so, that's all we acted on.
Yeah.
The law's given to us. You guys, you gave us some.
There was two sets.
You gave us some, and there was another, so we didn't go steal nothing.
No, I...
And people didn't tell us that we, this, take this to get the board, they didn't do that.
If that's how it came across, I apologize. We brought a set to that meeting, and we emailed a whole set before, and then there was some before that. And then I'm talking about after that.
Councilman Standing Soldier.
Well, I guess I interrupted everybody and said mostly everything I wanted to say, but, um, the, we all have a good talking stick. And what some people come across as is a good smokescreen. And why we are here today is because of something that we look at as not being done right. And in order to say we could change it and we could do something better, we create a smokescreen. We point our finger at other, so I think we should all just get on the same page, let this investigation complete itself, find out where we're at, and if nobody's guilty of anything, we all walk away with smiles on our faces. Is that a good consensus? I mean, is that the way to go? I mean, I think it is. Everybody seems to be nodding their head up here, and we're all tired and we want to go home, let's send it on its way and move on down the road.
So I... Ending the review. Yep, so, yeah.
Councilman Jumping Eagle. Okay.
Okay.
Resolution of the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe affirming the suspension of the American Horse School Board and appointing the Wisdom Keepers John Haas, Robert Tuchrow, and Dr. Richard Ironclad as an interim school board for American Horse School. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas American Horse School is a tribally controlled school of the Glaucu Tribe, providing an educational service of students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. Whereas the American Horse School operates with a five-member school board who are responsible for policy development and implementation and oversight of operations, management, and administration of school activities in accordance with tribal, state, and federal laws. And whereas at a duly held education meeting, committee meeting by motion and vote suspended the American Horse School Board until further notice and recommends appointing an interim school board until the matter is resolved. And whereas there are questions regarding American Horse School Board expenditures, and the OST Education Committee has determined that a financial review needs to be conducted, and that American Horse School Board should be suspended until further notice, and that an interim board should be put in place until a financial review is completed and recommends the appointment of, of John Haas, Robert Tuchrow, and Dr. Richard Ironclad of the Wisdom Keepers as an interim school board for American Horse School until the matter is resolved. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby affirm, hereby affirms the suspension of the current American Horse School Board until further notice and appoints John Haas, Robert Tuchrow, and Dr. Richard Ironclad as an interim school board for the American Horse School until the matter is resolved. And be it, be it further resolved, the OST Tribal Education Program is directed to have the financial review conducted within forty-five days with a written report of findings provided to the tribal council. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lio Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Steele. Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Anna Halverson, or she's, Troy Little.
Not voting.
Thirteen yes, four not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for coming, uh, coming out and... I did, I don't recall. All right, moving on to the two-thirds item, at this time I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, HHS Committee Chair.
Thank you, Chair. First one is resolution, the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe approving the disenrollment of Ashley Elizabeth Ferguson from the Glaucu Tribe membership. Down to the fourth, whereas Ashley Elizabeth Ferguson requests disenrollment from the Glaucu Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six, point one zero-two relinquishment, and whereas by motion enrolled on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership by disenrollment for Ashley Elizabeth Ferguson. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership, enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Ashley Elizabeth Ferguson, effective immediately. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Second.
Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Call for the vote.
Let's make them stay here for that.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lio Weston, voted yes. Garfield Steele. Jackie Sears. Jillian Spotted Bear.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
No.
James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Not yet. George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Stacy, I'll vote yes on that.
Okay, I have you as not voting, so I'll change your vote to yes, okay.
Nine yes, six no, two not voting. Motion carried.
The next one is resolution, the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe approving the disenrollment of Alicia Evelyn Sanchez from the Glaucu Tribe membership. The fourth, whereas Alicia Evelyn Sanchez requests disenrollment from the Glaucu Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six, point one zero-two relinquishment. And whereas by motion enrolled on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership by disenrollment for Alicia Evelyn Sanchez. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Alicia Evelyn Sanchez, effective immediately. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lio Weston. Garfield Steele. Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Jillian Spotted Bear. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
No.
James Cross.
Oh.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Eight yes, six no, three not voting, motion carried.
Next one, resolution, the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe approving the disenrollment of Ignatius Young Bear from the Glaucu Tribe membership. The fourth, whereas Ignatius Young Bear requests disenrollment from the Glaucu Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three enrollment code article six, section sixteen, point six, point one zero-two relinquishment. And whereas by motion enrolled on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership by disenrollment for Ignatius Young Bear. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Ignatius Young Bear, effective immediately. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior, voted yes. Lio Weston. Garfield Steele. Jackie Sears. Jillian Spotted Bear.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yep.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Eight yes, six no, three not voting, motion carried.
Okay, next one is resolution, the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe approving the disenrollment of Sheena Sanchez from the Glaucu Tribe membership. Fourth, whereas, I should say, Stacy, enter her name instead of the Ignatius on this one? On the fourth, whereas, whereas Sheena Sanchez requests disenrollment from the Glaucu Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six, point one zero-two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership by disenrollment for Sheena Sanchez. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Glaucu Tribe membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Sheena San, Sheena Sanchez, effective immediately. Motion to approve with that, um, name change on the fourth, whereas.
Good, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier. Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lio Weston. Garfield. Chris.
Oh, huh.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
No.
James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl. George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
No. Yes, Secretary, yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Nine yes, five no, three not voting, motion carried.
Okay, next one is resolution, the Glaucu Tribal Council, Glaucu Tribe approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven Master Health Contract Number HHS dash I dash two four one dash two zero two five dash zero 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 two between the Glaucu Tribe and the United States of America Department of Health and Human Services Indian Health Service for the period October first, twenty-twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas pursuant to PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight, the Glaucu Tribe plans and operates the programs, functions, services, and activities in accordance with the Master Health Contract number HHS dash I dash two four one dash two zero two five dash zero 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 two for various health programs, including the Indian Health Services Security Program, Indian Health Service Security Program located on the Pioneer Indian Reservation. Whereas the Glaucu Tribe wishes to enter into a master health agreement with the United States Department of Health and Human Services Indian Health Service for various health programs for the fiscal years twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight with annual review and funding. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services Committee has reviewed the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight Master Health Contract and recommends approval by the tribal council. Whereas the Master Health Programs includes health education, solid waste, ear, nose, and throat, community health representative, non-emergent, APTI, LUT, OTP, and the health administrations programs, and are located and funded under PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight Indian Self-Determination Act. Now therefore be resolved that the Glaucu Tribal Council does hereby approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through fiscal year twenty-twenty, I should say, twenty-twenty-eight, Stacy? On the second to the last, whereas. Master Health Contract for Contract Number HHS dash I dash two forty-one dash two zero two five dash zero 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 two between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the United States of America Department of Health and Human Services Indian Health Service for the period October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And be it further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president shall sign any documents necessary to execute this Master Health Contract. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Seconded by Councilman Still. Call for the vote.
Ryan, just for clarification, what whereas was that one? Second to the last, whereas? David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Jackie Sears. Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Bee Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of Oglala Sioux Tribe to cancel the shared facility agreement and request full FY twenty twenty-six Indian Health Service funding. The fourth, whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe in twenty twenty-three entered an agreement between the Great Plains Tribal Leaders House Board and the Oglala Sioux Tribe regarding facility sharing, patient care integrity, and mutual support in Rapid City. And whereas OST entered into the agreement to implement the Native Women's Health Care, Community Health Representatives, and Native Healing Programs in Rapid City Facility. Such programs funded by the Indian Health Service through the PL ninety-three dash six thirty, six. Should say six thirty-eight, Stacy's right there. Another typo. Contract. And whereas the Great Plains Tribal Leaders House Board has been funded through an Indian Health Service PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight. There should be a three on that one, Stacy. Contract to provide services to Oglala Sioux, Shana River, and Rosebud Sioux by the Oyate Health Care and same facility with a retention of funds from the OST PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight contract for payment to Oyate Health Center for shared facility costs in exchange for specific services and to provide a quarterly reconciliation of actual costs to the Indian Health Service and to OST. And whereas Oyate Health Center has not provided the required quarterly reconciliation of actual services provided to OST and has not satisfactorily delivered services as outlined in the twenty-three agreement. And whereas the agreement has now expired and Oyate Health Center is providing duplicative services that OST is providing in the shared facility. And whereas OST now requests the Indian Health Service provide the OST the full funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-six PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight. Put a six in that one, Stacy. Contract without retaining a. Without retaining a share of funding for payment to Oyate Health Center for the shared facility services. And whereas OST Health and Human Services Committee met on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five and approved forwarding the attached letter to the Indian Health Service to request full funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-six without retention of a share for payment to Oyate Health Center for services. It recommends the OST Tribal Council approve the letter to IHS. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves the attached letter to the Indian Health Service requesting full funding of the FY twenty twenty-six PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight contract for Native Women's Health, Community Health Representatives, Native Healing Programs provided in Rapid City and the Great Plains Tribal Leaders House Board Facility. That should say Oyate Health Care Facility. Motion to approve with those corrections, Stacy.
Okay.
Quite, no, wait, quite, Chair, I don't see the letter, though. Is it one supposed to be drafted, Ryan, or? Has one been drafted yet? Because there's no letter provided.
Your. The facility, is that Oyate Health Facility? Okay. Yeah.
Julie, you chaired the ending of that meeting last week. Was there a letter provided? With this resolution? I think the motion. Stacy would be to approve this resolution and then have our attorneys work on drafting that letter to Indian Health Service. That's my motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Seconded by Councilman Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier. Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Jackie Sears. Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Bee Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman. You got a question?
Yeah. So I don't know if it's for Mr. Weston or whoever, but. You know, when we go through the agenda, we always pass up one of the most important agenda items, and that's the banishments. And in Law and Order. The Attorney General told us she handed over a whole packet full of. Names of individuals to our attorneys. And if I recall, Lyle, in our committee, we took action that those lists be here at this council meeting. Because. There's an individual who was sent to prison maybe about four or five years ago for distribution of meth. And that individual's already back out in our community. Now how fair is it to all those other guys that we banished? Seems like this is not an issue for us anymore. We took care of a list and we're not pursuing the rest when there's a lot more out there that were convicted since the beginning of this ordinance. And we're sitting here saying that this is one of the biggest problems on our reservation. The meth, fentanyl, all the drugs, this violence. But yet we're not enforcing these ordinances. And I brought this up time and time again. And I brought it up in Law and Order, and that's what the Attorney General said. She brought a whole packet over and gave it to our. Our. Legal department. And I recall saying that I wanted all those names on this agenda. So if we're not going to honor. You know, our responsibilities of. Of this ordinance, you know, pushing this ordinance, then we might as well rescind those ones that we did banish. You had one guy that came in front of us and pled his case, but we still denied him. And that individual, you know, he did turn his life around. He starts sun dancing and he's doing good, but we still held it to him. But yet, we're not doing nothing with all these other individuals, so. I don't know, Mr. Weston. What happened with, I mean. Somewhere the ball's being dropped. Ever since you brought that up. I haven't seen it either. And not even in the emails. So I really don't have an answer for you, other than we have to, you know, find out where it went. Those of you that remember last I've been, every month, me and Robin harped that we wanted something next month, next month. And it's still happening. So why is it still happening? Somewhere that ball's being dropped, and I'm sick of it. So if we're not going to pursue this, then I'll make a motion that we rescind all those other banishments until we bring those names back. Because we have an individual that's already back in our community, walking around freely, and that's not fair to those other individuals that were banished. So if we're not going to enforce this ordinance, then let's rescind the rest of those.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
You know. Garfield, the last time that I heard that a list was given. I know it was given to the secretary. By the Attorney General. But what happened is, I think Stacy said she gave it to our attorneys because they had to review them. And I think at that time, Ryan, you did tell us that you looked at all of them, and we have to provide due process actually to them. So some are in prison, some were, I don't know where at, but I think at that time she was sending out, they were sending out notices to them, right? That was the last list I knew that Attorney General gave to Stacy. The last list was, I don't know if that was. Beginning of this term, or I couldn't remember if it was. Because I remember that we dealt with every one of them, those ones. But I know that there were some that were in prison, and you guys still had to get them notification to them and to hear something back. So that was the last time I heard that. So I don't know if any more new lists came out.
The Secretary wants to respond, but before that, I'd like to read the last motion. It was. Fifteen. Yes, two no. Or two not voting. Motion carried. Go ahead, Secretary.
So according to ordinance number twenty-four dash zero seven, the banishment procedure within the policies, once the chief of police, attorney general, tribal official, or any person with information regarding an individual with a dangerous drug offense or homicide may provide information to the legal department. And then the legal department shall provide the list of names and last known addresses to the tribal secretary. On or before the second Tuesday of the month, the tribal secretary shall notify all persons whose names are on the list prepared by the legal department. Hand delivery or certified mail, return receipt requested, to the last known address. The tribal secretary prepares packets to distribute to the tribal council. We did this during the last batch of. Batch of. Banishments. We did get those, and you guys met on them, and you did your banishment. I have not seen a packet after that. But according to this, I did myself my own reminder sheet. So I have this hanging up in my office. And so the next one should have been. September ninth is when I was supposed to get them notified for this council meeting. However, I have not received the batch. So the next time is October fourteenth. So if I get a packet before then, then I can send out certified letters to all these individuals before October fourteenth. And that way they'll be on notice, and they will be on the agenda for the October session.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm gonna let the attorney speak and then.
So I have the list. I have to verify their last known addresses. And so I've done that, and it will be on the next council agenda. Unless you want to have a special just to address banishments. But according to the ordinance, Stacy has to provide notice anyway, so. It is quite a long list, too, actually. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And there's a couple of them that I have. Different addresses on, so. I think what we can do is we'll just send them notice to both addresses, so that's a couple other issues, but that's where we're at.
Counselman.
The meeting I'm talking about, what happened in July. And those should have came forward in August. That's what I'm talking about. Every month, we come up with an excuse. And quite frankly, I'm sick of it. That's not a long list. That's actually a short list. There's a lot of individuals that have been convicted or charged since two thousand sixteen. And so far, we only banished sixteen people. That's a short list. So whoever's responsibility it is, they need to get on it. Because right now, we're not serious about it. And that's why it's still running rampant in our communities. And that's all I'm saying. So I hope we do bring it next month. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We're gonna move. Is that it for HHS? Okay. So moving on, I'll turn it over to the EBD Committee Chair.
So I'm reading for the chair. Item one was not approved, we're two-thirds on, so we'll be going to item number two.
I did pass out, or did make a two-thirds listing of all those that made the two-thirds list, so if you did not get the list, please raise your hand, Angie can give you a copy.
So, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe rescinding Resolution Number. Rescinding Number twenty-five dash one two, one twenty-five establishing the Prairie Wind Casino Task Force, whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeen, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U.S.C. subsection five one two three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Sections One, FKMNW empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas by Resolution Number twenty-five dash one two five, the tribal council established the Prairie Wind Casino Task Force. And whereas on September fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Economic and Business Development Committee recommended that the tribal council adopt this resolution to rescind Resolution Number twenty-five dash one two two five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby rescinds Resolution Number two five dash one two five, which established the Prairie Wind Casino Task Force effective immediately. Certification. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, seconded by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Jackie Sears. Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Bee Frandl.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Donroy Ghost Bear. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes to not voting, motion carried.
The next resolution, resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe to request the United, United States acquire the property purchased from Marvin Al Grass in 2019 into trust status for the benefit of the tribe and amending Ogallisoue Tribe Tribal Council Resolution Number 23-119 to correct a clerical error. Whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that is, has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article 6, as, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie and 1851, 1 Stat 749, September 17, 1851, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, April 29, 1868, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe organized under section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 USC subsection 5123, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article 3 of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisoue Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article 4, Sections 1, F, K, M, N, W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, and adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoue Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe pursuant to resolution 19-198 Alpha, or A, September 4th, 2019, approved a purchase agreement between the tribe and Marvin Al Grass for certain real property owned and fee simple by Mr. Grass. And whereas on or about September 19, 2019, the president and treasurer of the tribe executed the purchase agreement on behalf of the tribe. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe desires the United States to acquire into trust status for the benefit of the tribe, the property purchased from Marvin Al Grass, grass property describes, described as township, 37 North, Range 37 West, of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Bennett County, South Dakota, Section 21. Accepting there from Lot H1 as shown on the plat filed in Book of Plats 2, Page 4. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe needs the United States acquisition of the grass property into trust for the benefit of the tribe for the purpose of economic development, specifically to relocate an existing tribal enterprise, a Class 2 and Class, and 3 East Wind Gaming Casino. And whereas the relocation of East Wind Casino will enhance economic development through greater patron accessibility and increased employment opportunities for tribal members. And whereas the Ogallisoue Tribe makes this request for the trust acquisition of the grass property pursuant to Sections 5 of the Indian Reorganization Act, 1934, 25 USC subsection 5108, and Section 20 of the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act of 18, 1988, 25 USC subsection 2719A1, as the grass property is located within the boundaries of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and those boundaries existed on October 17, 1988. And whereas this resolution amends Ogallisoue Tribal Council Resolution Number 23-119, Resolution Number 23-119, for the sole purpose of correcting a clerical error with the legal description of the grass property in Resolution Number 23-119. And whereas the OST Land and Natural Resources Committee and Economic and Business Development Committee have reviewed the prepared fee to trust application, Ed recommends the approval of the request for the United States to acquire the grass property into trust for the benefit of the tribe. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribe Tribal Council does hereby approve the request to the United States to acquire the grass property into trust for the benefit of the tribe for the purpose of the economic development and as authorized by the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934 and the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act of 1988. And it be further resolved that the Ogallisoue Tribal Council with the instant resolution, amends resolution number 23-119 by correcting a clerical error with the legal description of the grass property in Resolution 23-119 certification.
Jeez, motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Second by Councilman Dillon. Comment, go ahead.
Somewhere in there, we need to put Class 2 gaming facility. So they can't stop us and can't tell us no, because if they can do it, we can do it. They have Class 2 gaming all across the state, so we would be within our, our right to have Class 2 gaming. So that's what we need to strive for. So would you please add that in there, Class 2 gaming facility?
Do you want on the, on the, whereas at the second page on the top, do you want that to read more in detail? Because it does say tribal enterprise, a Class 2 and 3 East Wind Gaming Casino? Take out 3? Did you get that Stacy?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Okay, call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman, standing soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Maya Weston?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Jackie Sears? Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior? Donard Ghost Bear? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes to not voting, motion carried.
The next item is item number five in your pocket. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council. Resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe authorizing the executive committee to finalize and approve.
Thought that was two thirds, I thought that was tabled.
The, the, this one was not, it's the one prior, number four was tabled, the tarot fees was tabled. So I'll start again.
Not from the beginning.
Yeah, don't interrupt me, no teasing, just, resolution of the Ogallisoue Tribal Council of the Ogallisoue Tribe authorizing the, no. If you, here's the, the secretary just passed out the updated two thirds, y'all. It's on there. There it is. Look on second page. Right here, that's the updated two thirds. So I'm gonna start again. It's on you guys.